And I already.
And just want to let you guys know, do me a check on the mic, you guys are like, you guys are heard on Zoom. So I just want to give you guys a warning.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. See, I think that was from sleep. Or at least one thing. We need a next one.
One, two, three, four. Four.
There you go.
I.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. That's.
Welcome, everyone. Oh, I got it. I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, October 10th. And I would like to note for the record that Counselor Crossley, Counselor Iverson, and Counselor Deckard, Counselor McKim, and Counselor Hawke, myself, are here in the Nat U Hill Room. Counselor Munson is not here. She is on her way, though, and will be here shortly. So we will go ahead and proceed. And let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. We apply. I would leave out this state of the people. And to be held from their just hands. Like, and to go on. In the next school. With your team, and to us. For all.
Now we have the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any items to add or remove from tonight's agenda?
I do. I've forgotten.
Oh. Yes, I was going to do that when we got to it, but of course. Um. We have one item that we're going to table to our next meeting, and that's item number 11 from the Prosecutor's Office. We're still awaiting documentation uh to officially award the grant, so we'll do that next time. Is, are there any questions or concerns with removing that or tabling that item?
You need to state the date that it's going to be tabled to.
I just said next meeting. Oh, October 24th. So yeah, I guess it's not the next meeting, is it? Holy moly. Um. Can we do a voice all in favor of tabling the Prosecutor's Office additional appropriation request to October 24th? Say aye.
Aye.
Close. Nay. All right, it passes. Are there any other changes? All right, seeing none, we will proceed with that adopted agenda. Number four on our agenda is public comment. Um, this is for items that are not on the agenda. So if anyone either online or in person has any public comment they'd like to make, please make yourself known by raising your hand on Zoom or approaching the podium here in the room. Okay, I see no hands raised, no one coming forth with comments. So we will move on to department updates. Do we have any departments who would like to make an update with for us this evening? I do not see any departments wanting to talk to us this evening, and that is okay. We're, yeah, we're moving through. Um, now we have council liaison updates. Um, time for us to think about the various departments and commissions and committees and boards and um update each other. Has anything happened that we need to share? Counselor Iverson.
Uh, just briefly, I took advantage of an invitation from our J.FAC days uh to shadow the court process with Ms. April Wilson and Ms. Karen Rembeck. Uh, I spent a little bit of time going to a bunch of different courts and observing and learning. And so just wanted to send out a thanks to the Board of Judges for their hospitality as well as the opposite prosecutor and public defender for making the time to take me around.
Great. Any other updates from councilmen, from council members? Okay. Next we have on our agenda an board and commission appointment.
Counsel, I move to approve the appointment of Andrew Gunther to the Environmental Commission, completing a term of two years, which expires on February 1st, 2025.
Second.
Great. Um, this is for the Environmental Commission, and I believe, Peter, you're our liaison.
That that is correct, Madam President, and should the council approve this? Uh, this will bring the uh the body to a full appointment status for the first time in probably before the pandemic. So uh, this is a, this is a big deal that this is on our agenda tonight. And um, I know that uh the President of the Environmental Commission has done an interview uh with Mr. Gunther and sends along his favorable recommendation to the council.
Good to know. Are there any um questions or comments from council on this appointment? Counselor Deckard.
I just, I want to thank Mr. Gunther for stepping forward for service. I know he's done that in the past. And I also want to say to anyone watching at home, if you were thinking that you would like to get more involved in serving, boards and commissions are a place to do it. And I feel like we used to say that a lot, and maybe that needs repeated here. Um, how do you know if you're qualified or not? Well, if you're interested and you're willing to serve your community, that'll work. So take a look at the lists that are out there. Let one of us know if you'd be interested. We could try to help you with that. But we need folks in this government of the people to serve in this community with your friends and neighbors. So please step forward as Mr. Gunther has done.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, could I have a roll call vote? Oh, I guess if there's public comment, there would be an opportunity for that as well. If there was any public comment on the appointment? I see none. So let's go ahead with our roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion pass unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, now we move on to item number eight, which is um from our Sheriff's Office. And I'd like to acknowledge for the record that council has received a copy of the 2023 January to June commissary fund report. I'd also like to invite uh Jail Commander Givens to give us a brief overview, if you'd like, um, just of the the fund report and any other updates regarding the jail. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you for having me. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. A brief overview. Um, as of January 1st, we had came into office with a commissary balance of $36,625.11. Since January 1st, we have had $153,491.54 in receipts, money that we've gained. Um, the interest from January to December is $585.91. Commissary expenditures, $80,000.87, or $80,000, or $80,087.76. Ending commissary balance as of June 30th is $110,614.80. Um, I don't know how in depth you want to go, uh, but essentially as of this moment, we've spent that 80K. Uh, but we are furnishing uh every single inmate that comes into the facility. And I've talked about this in prior meetings, so I don't want to go take too much time with everybody here. Um, shirts, underwears, bras, um, anything that they need. Uh, even if they came in with it, we give them new um shoes. Uh, we paid for different line items that were short for 2023, uh mats. Uh, some of the people that have come through, you've seen the condition of the mats we're in. We ensure that they're not tore up, they're in one piece, they're not flat, where people are laying down on the metal beds. Um, any, any loss that we've had in terms of the budget we came into, we've compensated with commissary monies, which is specifically what the sheriff is trying to do with those, that money that we bring in.
I have a question, just um for everyone's edification. The commissary fund is generated from revenue that the folks who are incarcerated spend in the jail. And what are the types of things that are most, most often purchased and contributing to the fund?
Well, commonly purchased items, we offer a variety of items, whether it's hygiene all the way to soda pop. The most purchased items are tobacco products, number one, first and foremost by far. Soda pop. Very rarely, we get, I mean, we get ramen noodles, things like that, things that are easy to make. We've, we put microwaves, which we purchase out of commissary in every block, so that people could have warm food later on, so that they can purchase certain things that you could cook in. My popcorn, for instance, is another item that's pretty highly sought after. But you see a lot of purchases we've approved outside of our jail jumpsuits. You can purchase now and wear inside the block sweatpants, sweatshirt, shorts, so that you can come out of that, just that one issue clothing that we offer initially, and save that for when you have AA, you can wear, because you have to wear your jumpsuit when you're moving through the facility. Before, you had to have your jumpsuit on at all times. And when we came in, we thought, I mean, that's hard to wear when you only launder it two times a week. That's because you can't hold up that laundry schedule. When you go through the 200 people, you can only get that two times a week. So we try to rectify that with our commissary fund. So basically, what we've, what we've done as a staff is say, if the inmates are gonna spend money on products here, and we're gonna get a surplus with that, we're gonna put it back into the facility itself and the inmates inside of it, as much as we can.
Yeah, thank you. Are there other questions or comments from council? Counselor Iverson?
Yes, thanks for being here. In the list of expenditures by category, the only category where there were zeros was in a line titled TransUnion. Can you explain what that is?
There are some things specifically when it comes to TransUnion, for instance, that I don't take care of. Specifically, I have Jordan Taylor take care of those things.
Could you come up to the mic, please? Thank you, sir.
Unfortunately, I don't have the experience I'd love to have, given my transition in April. But that's something that was used in recent years, and I'm not certainly exact, like the specifics on what that was used for, unfortunately, at this time. But we have not used any thus far this year. And during my time, I can certainly research that to see what was paid from that category and let you know once we have the opportunity to do so.
Sure. Yeah, it just jumped out at me since there were zeros on that line, and it's not clear what, you know, it is. So thank you. I appreciate you calling up.
It's probably money transferring.
Yeah. And there's, there's items in the budget, when we went through our budget hearings, that we've started to slim down for 2024, that we have not, we are not spending money that we don't have to right now, for obvious reasons. Everybody's trying to keep things very tight. So.
Other questions? Counselor Crossley?
It's not so much a question, it's a comment. I know you had just talked about Commander Gibbons, the, you know, the underwear and bras and things like that, that you have given to, been able to purchase for the female inmates. And I just wanted to say I appreciate that, and thank you very much. You all gave me an opportunity to go earlier in the spring to talk to the female inmates. And a lot of them were explaining the reasons why it would be helpful to feel some kind of dignity to have those things and why it's important for that. And so I guess I was a little taken aback and was surprised that some of those things may have not been kept up with things. But I just wanted to just really say publicly acknowledge and say thank you for doing that and all that you continue to do to put some type of human dignity to folks that are being held incarcerated. So thank you.
Welcome.
Counselor McKim?
Thank you for the report. I just, I see that under expenditures, under equipment, we see night vision goggles, flock cameras, and tasers. I assume those are for the deputy, for the sheriff's side, right? Not for the jail, is that?
So by Indiana Code, the commissary fund has nine categories that you can purchase from. The night vision goggles were for night shift on the sheriff's side. The flock cameras, we've talked about in other meetings, it's another sheriff's side. We've since rectified that in our new budget. We won't be purchasing that out of commissary next year. The tasers were something that I brought in, which are incredibly expensive, obviously, but they are a less lethal device that we did not have available. For instance, the use of force incident where we had to terminate somebody. I specifically thought as a use of force instructor, we had a less lethal interjection that we could have utilized rather than engaging in a physical altercation. It would have been much safer. So we invested, we bought six initially. We trained captains, sergeants, corporals, and I still only allow sergeants and captains to carry. In the event that, the reason we trained the corporals was if they get promoted, then they have proper training to utilize that. So we went from no tasers to having some tasers. And I didn't want our use of force involving tasers to go up 800% in the first two months, and everybody's like, how did that happen? And I'm like, because we got tasers, that's not what I wanted. So yeah, of those three things, tasers is the only thing the jail purchased.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Well, thank you for being here. I appreciate your time. And I just want to echo the comments that appreciate the things that you're doing there in the jail to, to bring a little bit of humanity.
I appreciate that. I think it's, I think, and I don't speak for the sheriff often, but there's a reason he brought me here, and I bought into his vision. I think it's very easy to be a good person. And sometimes, without speaking of our administration, sometimes you get lost in the job and you forget about the people. And that could have been what happened. But with Sheriff Marte, it's very much people first, without question. So I appreciate you guys seeing that, and we're working hard for it.
Yeah, yeah, we see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we are now moving to item nine from our legal department. And go right ahead.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to approve ordinance 2023-34, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for projects which include, but are not limited to, number one, various building and office space improvements, including furniture, carpeting, tile, office space, system renovations, new office systems, restroom improvements, computer improvements, and audio/video equipment improvements. Number two, parking garage improvements, including security and gate systems. Number three, cars trail extensions. Number four, medical equipment for sheriff's vehicles. Number five, airport improvements. And number six, car spilled turf and all related improvements, and the incidental expenses in connection with these projects.
Second.
Thank you. I'd just like to note for the record that Counselor Munson has arrived. And welcome, Mr. Cockrell.
Thank you. At the work session, I presented this along with the appropriation ordinance. Due to the timing of the additional appropriation advertisements, you will actually see the additional appropriation request at your next meeting. But in order to get everything advertised and to get the bond sold before Thanksgiving, which is kind of a magical time, to not do it between Thanksgiving and Christmas, because you get, you get higher interest rates. The risk is higher there. We wanted to go ahead and get this bond in front of you and approved so we can begin the advertising process for selling the bond. I think the big difference between this one and the, when we talked about last week, has already been read in that we changed items four and five, the metal, medical equipment for sheriff's vehicles and airport improvements. And we, and we took off a couple items that I think we determined that we, we either didn't need or we were going to expend from a different source. So other than that, it's, it's very similar to the bond ordinance is that we, we talked about at your last meeting, as well as for the last few years at this time of year. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Counselor Iverson, I mean, McKim?
Thank you. I know we won't have an interest rate until the bonds are actually sold, but what, do you have an estimate based on what you're hearing?
It's hard to tell right now. I think for the, for the longer bonds, we're looking at closer to four and a half to 5%. Since this is a one-year bond, I would expect it to be somewhere between the two and a half to three and a half percent. But I can confirm that with the bond, with bond finance, our financial advisor. I didn't reach out to them for that question, but I, that's kind of where my, my mind is.
Okay, thank you.
Other, Counselor Deckard?
I, I just want to say, as I continue to think about this list, this looks like, and I may be misremembering past bonds, but this looks like some of the most impactful bonds, I think, that we've had. And for folks that are watching, for whatever variety of reason of issues they might be interested in, I'm particularly intrigued by the ability to put that medical equipment into sheriff's vehicles. I think that's smart thinking. As Chief Dillard has heard me say a million times, wherever our deputies or our fine fire folks are at, they expect the same amenity and protection that they would get anywhere else in the state of Indiana. And I think that that helps to do that for our deputies who are out there doing all that. Airport improvements, and of course, the, in the economic development considerations there. Counselor Hawke has talked a great deal about that. And car spilled turf is huge. As we've talked about, I'd be a very poor parks liaison to not say that, that that is a thing that is a big deal. And I hear from constituents on that all the time. All the issues we manage, ironically, it's the car spill that I hear a lot about. Now, look, I know that can be lopsided because people care, but people care. And I think that that is a huge opportunity. So I'm really happy about this list. And I also want to say, Ms. Purdy from the Commissioner's Office has been working through the past bonds to maximize those dollars. So those dollars are going into things that are noteworthy. And I think that between that and ARPA and what we're investing in with the county budget, I think it's a really good day for the county.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, as you know, I have many years not voted in favor of the bond issue. And because of the statement that we are making that we don't have the money to do this otherwise. At this point in time, I'm not sure where we stand with the money. I mean, so I want to support the raises and some of the other major things that are going on right now. And a lot of this, we can't take care of with ARPA money or some of those big pots of money that people may say, well, look at all the money you have, but we're required to use that for certain things. So it's going to shock you all, I know. But I'm going to support the bond this time. That doesn't mean I will next time. But it is because I don't have a real good feeling for where we are on the money. I know we got a report, and I looked at three for it, and I thought, okay, where are the four Bs? And tell me when we're going to run out of the money that we're spending, more than we're bringing in. And so I don't have a good feeling about that. But I do have a good feeling about making sure we do something about those soccer fields that so many people want, and what we have to do at the airport. That has to happen, that just, no two ways about it has to happen. So I'm going to support it this year. I didn't want you to be too shocked.
Just as, as a father of someone who plays soccer out at Carst, I, I hear a lot about the soccer field as well.
I'm speechless. Go right ahead.
I'm kind of speechless, too.
I never do.
You never do. It's amazing.
Just, I'll be real brief. I support all the projects on this list. I think it's a well-selected group of projects with broad benefits across the county and stuff that I think the, the public is going to be supportive, and it has been, has shown their support of.
I wanted to ask just one question, and this might be better asked when we have the, the appropriation part in front of us. But the Carst turf, is that, that's budgeted at partial, not the entire part out of this? Okay.
I'm looking back, I believe it's 1.2 million of it is out of this.
Okay.
So it's, it's not the full amount.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was remembering correctly. So we still have some more work to do there.
Correct.
Got it. Got it. Did you have more to add?
I may. I was just gonna say that the Carst project, if you will, there is a 1.2 million for the actual regular fields. Project that they would have for drainage and things of that nature. And then there's a four-point, something I don't remember. It does, two field, we had this conversation, I think.
Yes.
And lights. That's the four million. So you could, this 1.2 could be used for the, toward the one, to the, towards the four-point, whatever. Or you can, at a later date, choose to do all of the fields and the regular grass fields.
I see.
So you have some options there.
Okay.
That makes sense? We could do it all, make it all nicer.
We could do it all, just like that?
Okay.
All right, are there questions? Anything else from council on this one? All right. Then could we hear public comments, if there is any? I see no public comments, so could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are on to item 10 on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 1215-006A, Election Fund Commissioners, in the amount of $1,000 in the Supplies category and $71,000 in the Services category, for a total appropriation of $72,000.
Second.
Thank you. And hello again, Ms. Purdy.
Hello again. Sorry, I was not paying attention.
We, I believe we heard about the nature of this during budget, because this is something that needs to be in there.
Yeah, yes, we did. We did talk about this during the budget. By taking on the, what used to be NAPA, we have obligations for that particular building, it's specific to elections. And so what we've been doing, because we failed to request a budget for this year in 2023, we've been making payments out of our county federal. And so this will help us to make corrections as we need and hopefully to move forward, ensuring that the election costs are all in one particular budget.
Great. Are there questions? Counselor McKim?
So, just to clarify, rent gets paid to the Building Corporation, the Convention Center Building.
Correct. Yeah.
Counselor Crossley and then Counselor Iverson?
I'm Ms. Purdy. Um, I had just a really general quick question. Is there, because I've had people ask about this, and I'm curious about it, too. Is there any type of signage that will be on the building that will let people know that this, that NAPA is the election? Like where people can go to vote? I know that the signs on the sidewalk are there, but you really can't see it unless you pass by. But I'm just curious to know if there is any type of something in the works where on the awning or some sort, there is something that lets people know, that let people know that that is a place where they can go vote.
I think that's a really good question. We, we don't have any current plans for something of that nature. I do think that part of, part of our concern or issues were, first of all, we didn't know, the clerk didn't want to particularly use that building. And so it was originally supposed to be just for the one, I think, last year. And then we've got the CIB, and that is part of that project. So but you have a really good point, and so we need to at least think of signage for our upcoming election and going forward. Maybe something that's temporary or, I'm open to any ideas you guys might have.
Yes, I think that's Yes, I think that's just really important, just because for, like, especially for the upcoming, the big election year that will be happening next year. Um, just for people to know and, and I'm, I, I know the, the lovely history that goes along with that building. Um, and some of the things that go along with it. But yeah, I'm just, I would be curious to see if there is something that we could do that's temporary that I would hope that doesn't cost a lot, or we can just have something that would be out.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll look into that, that's a good idea.
I, I have nothing further, I'm glad this is forced.
One thing I want to say about that location um, that I like about it is it is a place with more than adequate parking for anyone who is coming to vote. And really, if you look at progressive voter administration, which is uh, really just letting everybody vote, uh, they say, make sure you have adequate parking, put it on a bus line, you couldn't be closer to a bus line. Um, and in a really identifiable spot. Now, crossing that intersection is my favorite thing to do on a Saturday or any day. But that's, I mean, that's anywhere you go. And I, I think there's something to be said for that. I do love the notion of getting a sign on that, because for us who run for office, we understand what that building is. You could hide that thing in Michigan, we'll find it. For the average bear out there, it didn't work that way. And every once in a while, we gotta go to those outside eyes of somebody passing by that every day who says, I don't know what they all go there for, but look at those signs. So that, I think that could be a, a helpful thing. But it's a, as it comes to accessibility, it theoretically meets a lot of those checkmarks if you're making ballot access a readily available thing.
Really good points, great suggestion. Other questions or comments on the current motion? Is there any public comments? I do not see any, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we are now going to number 12 on the agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for additional appropriations in Fund 4018-0000, Court Interpreter Grant in the amount of $2,000 in the services category.
Second.
Right, um, do we have anybody here?
No, uh, Lisa Abraham was unable to attend, and so she asked me to read something for you.
Sure.
And I'm trying to find it, sorry, there it is. She's, okay, so this is uh, what she sent me. She said, "In January, the courts received a $10,000 Court Interpreter Grant, which the council appropriated. All of the grant money has been spent, so the court applied for an emergency interpreter grant. On September 7th, the court was advised that they would receive an additional $2,000. This grant is reimbursable and that will help offset the costs incurred with interpreter services for the court hearings. The court is asking for the council to appropriate this amount at this time."
All right, very straightforward. Are there questions or comments on this one? Any public comments? Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We now have a series of items from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 8150-9623, Tana Futures in the amount of $4,818.20 in the personnel category and $2,276.04 in the supplies category for a total appropriation of $7,094.24.
Second.
Hi, Ms. Kelly, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Um, this is just a request to appropriate um, our reimbursements and um, income from the long-acting reversible contraceptives. So this is just going to continue to help us to support salary expenses and supplies for the futures clinic.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Any public comments? Let's go ahead with a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 8138-9621 in the amount of $2,746.59 in the services category.
Second.
Okay.
Um, yes, and so recently when our financial manager was reconciling Fund 8138, um, it was discovered that the Health Department received a reimbursement um, for a grant claim. This was in 2021, yet that was never issued a payment to IU Health. So this was just basically um, a correction that has been made.
Okay. The questions? On this one? Any questions down here? Public comment on this item?
Oh my God. Oh, oh, right ahead. I just wanted to thank the Health Department for their diligence in uh, putting their various accounts in order. And I believe it's appreciated by everybody on the council. Thank you.
Indeed. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
C, thank you.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8104-9624, Public Health Emergency Preparedness of $2,109 from the services category to the supplies.
Second.
Okay.
Um, and this is just um, a transfer request to allow our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator and Assistant to be able to purchase remarkable devices, which are like electronic writing tablets.
All right, um, any questions? Counselor Iverson?
I just want to thank uh, Ms. Kelly for her extensive documentation for this category transfer. That's, thank you for putting all that in there.
You are welcome.
Anything else from council?
Those devices are cool.
They are cool.
One myself.
I thought the title was wonderful, they're remarkable. Thinking, okay, somebody knew what they were doing.
Yep, good marketing on that one. Um, any public comment on this? And it looks like we can do a voice vote since it's a category transfer. So all in favor of the category transfer as described in the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now we're at 14, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Um, and we're at 14 from our probation department.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 9138-0000, Veterans Court Grant in the amount of $78,220 in the personnel category.
Second.
Uh, good evening, Counsel, Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer. This is one of eight agenda items I have for you tonight. Um, uh, the first one is our grant for our Veterans Court Program. We get this from the Indiana Office of Court Services. We've received this grant for the past, well, at least over five years. And it goes towards paying for our probation officer case management, case manager who is in uh, Veterans Court uh, supervising those individuals. And it's part of one of our four problem-solving courts.
Great, are there questions or comments from council? Nope. All right, is there any public comment on this one? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund 1123-9624, Community Transition Program in the amount of $15,000 in the supplies category, $30,000 in the services category, and $5,000 in the capital category for a total appropriation of $15,000.
Second.
So the Community Transition Program has been around for a while. It's been uh, you know, authorized by Indiana State statute um, for quite some time. And basically what it is, is somebody who has been sentenced to the Department of Correction, when they are being released or a little bit before their release date, uh, they notify the courts to let us know that somebody is going to be released soon and then ask the court whether they had authorized community transition, which is basically a program that where we might bring them back a little bit early into the community because they're going to be living in our community. And we want to provide some intensive services to try, try to get them in appropriate housing and appropriate services back into the community so that uh, we hopefully have a successful reentry. Um, uh, the, the Department of Correction reimburses us $25 a day per individual who is in the program um, that we accept. I did look up a little bit of stats uh, for this. And then the past 12 months, we've only had six people in the program. So it's not used very often. But of those six, every one of those were sentenced out of Monroe County and they were living in our county prior to being sentenced to Department of Correction. And they were coming back after. So we wanted to try to make that as successful a transition as possible. So um, these funds go to help with that and to help offset some of the expenses that um, uh, go into that program as well as other expenses for the department.
All right, are there questions or comments from council? Counselor Hogg?
Uh, yes, first of all, thank you for taking time to talk with me about this grant and to help me uh, understand that this is for Monroe County residents. It's not for people coming in from other counties that we're providing this service for. Um, and the reason why I have concerns about that, as I shared with you, is that um, we have enough problems of our own without welcoming the people that will need services from the folks here in Monroe County. Uh, so I'm happy to hear that we're doing what we can for those that are going to be coming back to our community, uh, but that we are not doing it in such a fashion that we are putting our own folks at risk. So thank you.
Counselor, um, McKim?
Um, what, what are the criteria used to determine who's allowed to participate in this?
Sure, so um, it's really up to the courts. Uh, the letter uh, is sent to the, the local court that sentenced the individual. Um, we do a little bit of a background information about what they were doing in the Department of Correction, where they might be residing in the community, um, and some of the services that the individual would like to receive, um, how willing they are to receive those services before the courts make a decision about authorizing the program. The vast majority of them that are on CTP come back in through the reentry court system or their problem-solving court. So they get really intensive services, they meet with people uh, several times a week. They meet with the court each week um, as they come back. So, but it's really up to each individual judge who sentences the individual, whether they would accept them back.
So, so this is really an alternative to the reentry court? Or, or is it working in conjunction?
It works in conjunction. Now, we could have somebody who's in CTP that is not accepted in reentry or they don't volunteer to be part of the reentry court. Um, so, but it, it does most of the time work in conjunction with reentry court. Thank you, yep.
And?
I, I have uh, two questions. Uh, one, my first question is, is that of duration? Um, how long are individuals in the CTP or is it dependent on the judge's ruling?
CTP is six months or less typically. So it's a very short period of time and it's typically at the end, you know, it'd be at the end of somebody's uh, commitment to the DOC. Yeah, just about six months or less.
And my second question was on the uh, drug testing, electronic mon, and electronic monitoring. Uh, is for all, for, for those in CTP, is, is that universal? That all the individuals that are in the program are monitored? Or is that based on, again, the judge's uh, ruling?
It's based on each individual circumstance, yeah. And uh, what's uh, the judge wishes as they're coming back in, especially if they're in reentry court, whether they, you know, they volunteer to be in reentry court, um, some of those restrictions that might apply. Um, but it's really uh, individually based on what the person's needs are. Thank you.
Counselor Hogg? Yes, um, when we are reviewing uh, the uh, population in the jail and we see those that say uh, holding for Department of Correction, some of which we've held for quite some time. And the last I spoke with the Sheriff's Department said that they had uh, been able to uh, move about 20 of those on to Department of Corrections. But is this in part because of our reentry court and uh, this particular uh, service that we're providing?
So uh, the ones that may be held in jail as far as for a DOC commitment, um, really, I'm not, I'm not sure, once they are committed to the DOC, they're kind of, they're awarded custody of the sheriff and then whatever the sheriff works out with the Department of Correction in terms of dates to try to get them moved up to reception and diagnostic. Others might be parole holds that are in there. And if that's the case, you know, that's a DOC uh, commitment, they're, they're being held there for that. So really, once that commitment happens, it's really up to the sheriff to figure out when they move to the Department of Correction, when the DOC can accept them.
When we um, hear many times that we have overcrowding in the jail, and of course, I know there's been a lot of work to reduce those numbers, but when you see several of them that were holding for the state, and I understand that was a problem throughout the state because some kind of mix-up with their computer systems or some such. But I think we yet reimburse something like 35 bucks a day or something like that for that. Uh, but that does not begin to cover the cost of operating a jail. So I, I want to make sure that we're not purposely doing things that end up costing the people of this county a great deal of money. And that might not be your question, uh, so.
Yeah, it's probably not a, a good question for me to answer, it'd be a better question for the sheriff to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on this? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Now, C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 4924-9624, Probation Cares Grant in the amount of $1,350 in the supplies category and $2,080 in the services category for a total appropriation of $3,430.
Second.
Yeah, so uh, this is a cares grant, a local community grant. Um, it's in two parts. Uh, part of it, it goes to help support our drug treatment court, helps offset the costs for uh, drug testing for the participants there. And another part is awarded to our community corrections program to help uh, purchase some journals and things like that, that we use as interventions with our clients um, to really work through things like, you know, problem solving and peer relationships, family relationships, things like that.
Are there questions from council? All right, public comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, and now we're on D.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations. Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in fund nine, one, four, zero, 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 pre-trial program grant, I O C S in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars in the personnel category. I hope I got that acronym right.
Okay, yeah, so, um, this is a second Indiana Office of Court Services grant, and this helps fund our pre-trial services program, uh, in the county, and uh, if you recall during the budget hearings, we let you know that we had just found out that this grant more than doubled, uh, which was fantastic news, uh, because it's paying a large portion of the salaries for the, uh, the trial attorney, the public defender, um, as well as a, a probation officer. Um, and we, we're just very pleased to be able to receive this grant and then them actually provide more funding, uh, for the next year.
That is great. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, can you tell us if this grant, um, that you've been awarded, this, uh, is going to require Monroe County, uh, to do more than we have in the past, or is it the same?
Same as we've doing, um, and in our pre-trial program, like, for example, our, our officers, um, assess over two thousand people a year um, who are newly arrested and try to provide some information to the court prior to initial hearings to see who might be most appropriately served uh, in the community while they're pre-tri- while they are pre-trial, while during their pre-trial period, um, or what kind of services they might need, those types of things, uh, so that we can try to make, uh, that transition as successful as possible, uh, to hopefully ma- have everybody appear back in court um, during that pre-trial phase, as well as not get rearrested during that time.
So when we see, um, that they're wanted on awards, or, you know, they're not showing up as they had promised to do when they are released, then, uh, is there consideration of perhaps not releasing so many so quickly? Or is that's just, uh, up to the courts and, and not something the probation officers, uh, weigh in on?
Well, so that, I mean, the courts are, are the ultimate decision maker on all of those, uh, issues, and those decisions are based on each individual person and the circumstances before them.
Are there other questions or comments? Is there a public comment on this item? And seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now we're on to E, right?
Yes.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in fund nine, one, five, zero, 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 mental health court grant in the amount of forty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars in the personnel category.
Second.
Okay, so the next four are grants that all come from the Department of Correction. We receive over a million and a half dollars, uh, per year to help fund our Community Corrections programming. Um, so that includes not just our Community Corrections, but this funding also helps us with our mental health court. Um, also provides, uh, some funding to our drug court, um, as well as pre-trial services. Um, so, uh, this is, uh, a grant that we've been awarded for years, many years. Um, however, it is flatlined, um, and has been for the past several years. We're kind of stuck at that, uh, one point five million. Um, and so unfortunately, that kind of means, uh, we have to off- offset any additional expenses in our project income fund. We're doing okay with that at the moment, but who knows what might happen in the future. Um, we are very hopeful, uh, well, we don't foresee any increases next year in twenty twenty-five either because it runs on a state budget year. This is the first grant they dole out for this state budget year that we're in. We expect probably to be flatlined again next year, um, but we will certainly advocate for additional funding in future years with the state. Um, but this is kind of where it's at. So this first one is for a mental health court.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Hatfield? Go ahead.
I, I don't know if this is in your bailiwick, uh, but do you have data for the Mental Health Court pro- program?
Well, yeah, we, we do track a lot of issues. I don't know that I can answer much off the top of my head at the moment, uh, depending on what your question is.
Yeah, yeah, I, that's why I wanted to couch it a little bit to say, I don't, I don't know, you know, prepared to speak about all the, this in the next three, so. We'll leave it be, yeah, okay.
Are there other questions or comments, Counsel Hawk?
Yes, does this, um, particular grant that you're receiving, um, does it require a certain, uh, number of probation officers?
Uh, so the, it doesn't necessarily require a certain number of personnel, s- personnel, uh, in its entirety. Um, but, you know, we go through in terms of creating this grant or writing this grant every year to look at our needs within the department, to make sure that we can appropriately service those in our community who are being sent to us. Um, and then our Community Corrections Advisory Board and our Board of Judges makes a decision about what to ask for each year. Um, we have kind of, uh, we try to ask for additional personnel, uh, whenever we can. Um, but again, we've been flatlined for the past few years, so we haven't been able to increase, uh, to be able to hopefully get our numbers down so that our, our client to officer ratio is smaller, uh, because we know those smaller numbers will help, uh, create better success and more opportunities for success for our clients.
The reason I ask the question is, since we don't know, um, maybe everyone else has kept this figured out, but we don't know when we're going to get to the point where where we're going to have to not have the, uh, dollars to make up for the raises and, and, and so forth for, uh, those who are covered with grants. And I know when the state came out and said, we're going to force you counties to pay probation officers a certain dollar amount. And, and, you know, of course, if you're a probation officer, you love that. Uh, that was many years ago when they said that. And the county councils, we were in session at the time at the state, and we were very concerned because not all counties are as well off as we are, and you know that. Uh, and so, uh, what we were told was, if you're up against it, just don't hire as many probation officers so that you can cover their salaries. And for a lot of different counties, they're going to have to do that because they've not had the increase in revenue that we have. So, um, I hope that we'll continue to do real well here in Monroe County, but if that time ever comes, I would like for you to keep an eye on that extra, the dollars that you're coming in for those user fees and, and see if there's a time that you can kind of slow down the use of that, because I know there's a lot of people here who would rather we don't really charge user fees. So, we're going to have to make some tough choices in the future.
I, I will say, I keep a real close eye on all of those funds, uh, and, um, uh, projected out several years, and, uh, so far, so good, fingers crossed that we don't run into any big bumps in the road, but, uh, uh, hopefully we'll be able to weather the storm of not having any increases the next year, uh, or two. Um, and then we'll see what happens with the state budget in the coming years.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson?
I, just one more question. The one point five million dollars that Monroe County receives, how's that compare with other communities across Indiana?
That's a great question. Um, I would say that we are fortunate. Um, and I believe that the Department of Correction really likes Monroe County and the things that we do here. Um, you know, we offer a lot of programs and services, and, um, uh, I, I, I believe that we are a leader in the state in many of the things that we do. And I think that's reflective in the money that we receive. Um, so I, I do think we are fortunate, more fortunate than other counties in that respect.
That's helpful context, particularly for a body that looks at dollar figures all night long. It's good to know, thanks.
Any other comments or questions on this one? Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in fund nine, one, four, two, zero, 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 Community Corrections Grant in the amount of one million forty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars in the personnel category.
Second. Again, this is, uh, the Community Corrections portion of the Department of Correction Grant.
Wow. Any questions or comments, Counsel Iverson?
I, I suppose this is a good point as any to, to just publicly state, uh, I was in the courts, uh, for one day only. And, and the work that your department does liaising with the different courts, uh, both, uh, in the court system and then back out on the street is remarkable, and, and just that so much of the public has no idea what you all do every single day. And it was, it was remarkable, it was like watching a miracle worker uh, piece together different pieces of the community to help individuals as they're navigating these court systems. And so, I just wanted just big kudos to everything you and your team are doing because it's absolutely necessary.
I appreciate that. I know our staff worked really hard to, to create success in our community. And I'd like to invite anybody who'd like to come over and take a tour of our offices and kind of sit down and see what we do, please reach out. I know, uh, Chief Linda Brady would love to have and host any one of you.
Appreciate that. Any other, go ahead.
Yes, for those listening at home, uh, because I had several people interested in, you know, what's going on at the probation office and, uh, and how that might tie to the kind of, uh, situations that we're seeing many times uh, with the, the criminal transients that we see and, and one might call, uh, all the folks who are dropping the dirty needles everywhere and causing this community a lot of havoc. Uh, and I, I just wonder just how bad it would be if we didn't have the probation officers, if we didn't have the assistance that we have. Maybe we wouldn't have as many people pouring into Monroe County. On the other hand, I would not want to be, uh, the one who didn't want to provide safety as far as we can take it for our community. Because if there's one thing that I hear over and over again outside of worrying about the price of groceries and gas, is that they are tired of not feeling safe on the streets. They're tired of not knowing that they can go to the grocery store without somebody knocking them down to get their money, uh, or even go to McDonald's and have somebody take the food right off of your plate. So, I know that you folks are not the one out arresting these people doing these crimes, but you have to be the ones working with them. And so it takes the whole team to try to get, make this community safer. And I hope that what we do, what you do, what others do, will be able to bring, uh, back some of that feeling that Monroe County residents had for years, that we felt safe on the streets and we felt safe in our homes. And if you think this sounds like an unusual statement coming from me, I invite you to listen in on my telephone and hear all of the comments I'm getting. Uh, they don't come here and tell us. But they sure tell me. And it's just your average Joe on the street. So, and, and I appreciate what you do because, as I said, I think it takes a team, and, um, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson and then, uh, Counsel Deckard.
I, I'm really looking forward to some of the conversations we're gonna have later on in our, uh, on our, our calendar here, uh, this evening, because I think what it does is it highlights where we are as a community is, uh, we don't look at individuals suffering from mental health or from substance abuse, uh, disorder, uh, from a fear-based, uh, or, or crime-based lens. In fact, we look to individuals so that we can help them. We see them as our neighbors, and we're looking to get, make sure that there are services for people who truly do, uh, need the helping hand of not only uh, county government, but also the different nonprofits, uh, that, that work with them. Uh, it is really important to state that, uh, individuals who are out there, who are, are begging for help, uh, are not, uh, necessarily criminal, uh, they are not necessarily dangerous. And we are doing everything we can to get the services out to those individuals. Thank you.
Any idea, I want to add it, add to this. Uh, one thing that has struck me is I kind of watch probation over the years, and as we're doing these funds, and I always appreciate when we go through these line by line, and honestly, we could take more time with it. I think we probably should because we up here as elected officials talk a lot about treatment options. Meanwhile, the probation department's not only doing treatment in targeted demographic areas. I mean, folks on that, a few lines back, we approved, uh, dollars towards a veterans court. Let me say that one more time, a veterans court, a target population which is lauded, uh, by all of us, uh, until we get them in the boots, and then somehow when they get home, we forget about them. And when they're out in our parks, we forget about them. But we have a court that is helping, is target-minded towards a demographic area. And so as we talk about treatment, I hope in our justice, uh, discussion that we go to probation because they have the data. We've seen it. That's why they're getting the grants. Mr. Hatfield keeps that data. Ms. Brady has supported that and been a, a leader at this day. And as we get that information, I think that can guide us, um, rather than say the generic term treatment. We can go to our folks in probation who actually know our neighbors and friends in our community. And the other thing I'll say is, I am anxious, and I'm waiting for the other counties to step up. I want to know what they're gonna do. I want to know what we would have done had they, uh, how were people gonna pay probation officers until the state got involved? Or are they just gonna act like it's not happening? And so I, uh, you can hide your problem and you can run from your problem, but your problem's gonna go somewhere. And we're already in, uh, we've got politicians passing the buck at the federal, state, and local level, to be truthful. It is time for leaders of communities to have vision for what that's gonna look like, and that might mean you need a veterans court. Right? And that might mean that you need problem-solving courts, period, because these problems will not go away. So, my, my long diatribe is to say, where Mr. Hatfield's gonna be in a lot more long meetings with Ms. Brady, talking about data and treatment and solutions so that folks like me get it right when we do what we do. Because that is part of it. These problems, they will exist, they'll continue to exist, they're in every family to some form in this community. And we gotta be real about that. It's not going away. The substance may change, but it's not going away. So, I appreciate you coming here, your patience with all of our questions. And we're gonna need you a whole lot more than what we've got you right now, and I apologize for that.
Well said. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hatfield? All right, any public comment? And I see none, so let's have a roll call vote on this appropriation.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in fund nine, one, four, eight, zero, 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 drug court grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred eleven dollars in personnel category.
Second.
So, this is another D O C grant. This helps fund our drug treatment court that has been in existence in our county since nineteen ninety-nine. So, two thousand twenty-four will be our twenty-fifth year, uh, in operation.
Wow. Kudos.
Do you happen to know how many we have in the remainder of the state, uh, drug, drug courts?
How many drug courts? I know there are over a hundred problem-solving courts. I'm not sure how many drug courts specifically. We just, I think they announced at the state level, they hit over a hundred as of this year.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, I believe Monroe County is one of the first problem-solving courts. Um, I don't know if it was the first, uh, Chief Brady would know better than I, um, uh, but we were very early on adopting a drug court.
Thank you.
Other questions, Counsel Hawk?
As a note of positive reinforcement here, um, because I was around when that happened. And you might remember, well, I'm not sure you were here yet.
I came in two thousand and four, so, is before.
One is it, no, you weren't. One of the things that I'm most proud of is that, um, in meeting with some people from Ball State, when I went to a conference, I arranged for the person who was when I went to a conference, I arranged for the person who was giving the lecture to come here to Monroe County to give the training and we arranged to have it at the convention center. And there were hundreds of people, hundreds of people who showed up so they could learn how to write grants. And and it was free to the public, but the entire meeting room was full at the upstairs at the convention center. And at that time, one of the ladies from the court might, I don't know, I don't think it was probation folks, but it might have been because everybody was there, wrote a grant and helped support one of these very first problem solving courts. That was back in the day. So for those of you who might think I only say negative things, there are times that you have to weigh in and say, here's the truth of what I'm hearing from the public. And I also go one step further and say, we could not have done what we have done in this county without the grants. And I know that and you know that. And Linda Brady knows that. So we're fortunate to have the grants. And we just have to know what the grants require us to do. So thank you.
Anything further? All right, any public comment? Let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for new account lines and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in Fund nine, one, four, four, zero, 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 zero Pre Trial Services Grant in the amount of two hundred seventy one thousand, eight hundred sixty six dollars in the personnel category. Second.
I appreciate you for allowing me to grab your attention for so long. This is our last one. This is the final one from the Department of Correction Grant and it helps support our pretrial services program.
Any other comments on this one? Counselor Munson?
Since this is the last last effort for the probation department tonight, I just wanted the public to know that out of these eight grants, the probation department has brought in over one million, eight hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars to serve the people in their needs in Monroe County. And kudos to Mr. Hatfield, Becky Strade and Chief Chief Probation Officer Linda Brady. You have our you have our gratitude and I think the gratitude of all the people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I can say that better. I don't.
Yeah. Yeah, I was actually going to say something not nearly as eloquent, but thank you for being here. We really enjoy when you visit because we learn a lot about the programs and it may seem that you did bring us all these last year and we did appropriate them then too, but you know, a lot of things come before us and I I have learned a little bit more each year about your program and what you do. And I think my colleagues said it well, it's it's such important, good work that shepherds folks, you know, through a complicated time and a complicated system. And it's it's really heartening when we get to see you here telling us about, you know, all of the the different things that you work on to make people's lives better. So that's it. Sorry, I said I wasn't going to and then I did. Counselor Iverson.
I I did. One thing was brought to my attention is that if the public goes to the probation department's homepage, Mr. Troy Hatfield's picture is there holding his national award. And I think we should probably take any free advantage we can to congratulate you on being nationally recognized for your good work.
Congratulations. Any public comment? Yes.
I just wanted to say that it is really a pleasure to work with the probation department. Their grants are so clean. I know Bree probably wants to say something. It's just absolutely amazing the work they do. I completely agree. Thank you.
Does, yeah, makes the auditor's office happy. That's always good. We'll go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hatfield. Um, we are at item fifteen on our agenda, which is a discussion on our opioid settlement funds. And I invited Commissioner Gipps to come and help us talk through just what these monies are, how we can spend them, what ideas. I've heard a lot of different things proposed and the commissioners have looked at using these funds in certain ways and I wanted to just have a public discussion about the nature of these monies and what we are planning for them.
Yeah, I share my screen.
Yes, of course.
Okay. I haven't done this before with y'all, so please forgive me. So I got to get back up here, get it started. So wanted to talk today about why isn't it not starting? I may need to have somebody better equipped than I am to get this going.
Want to just click on slideshow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Slideshow and the menu from beginning.
It's up at the top.
Yeah, and it's covered up by the other things that are on here.
That's frustrating.
Can you tell this room is full of professors?
I did this in class every day like five hundred times.
Okay, sorry.
Almost tied it.
Yeah.
A little higher.
It's this part that is in the way. I've got stuff on my screen that's in the way. That's the problem. Okay, well, let me just, maybe I can run it from here. Okay. Here we go. So I want to talk with you about the opioid grant that we have received from the state. This is in addition to the opioid settlement money that Bree is going to talk about in a little while, but we would like very much to use some of that opioid settlement money as a match for this grant. So part of what we'll be talking about is the local syringe services program. And you all know intimately, I think, about what this is, what it provides sterile needles, syringes, safe disposal. It helps prevent HIV and hepatitis C transmission and a lot of other things. So this is one of the things that that we are looking at with this additional grant money. And then what what it can do for us reduces those overdose deaths. It reduces new HIV and viral hep infections. It allows us to reach out to people in a trusted manner when they're ready to start their road to recovery. It reduces injuries from needle sticks and they it tends to it, the data indicates that it does not increase crime where they are located. So one of the big things that we put in for as a request this time was to replace Larry, the Indiana Recovery Alliance's outreach van. Larry is twenty eight years old. Older than half the population of the earth at this point, probably. Larry has is on his second motor. It breaks down frequently. Has to be taken to Indianapolis where it sometimes sits for a week or more for repair, which means that it's not able to do what we want it to do. And right now, the Indiana Recovery Alliance is working out of what I think of as a storefront almost at this location at one sixty nine South Rogers Street. It's very small. It's costly. And it doesn't meet the needs of the Indiana Recovery Alliance. So earlier this year, we had the chance to apply for additional grant money. The folks at the Indiana Recovery Alliance, our own health department and I worked together. We we had less than a month with this application together to work on some things that we thought would make a big improvement in our community. So if I may, I'd like to oops, why is this video not starting? Okay, I I don't know if I need to turn up my sound, but we'll see how this goes. How are we going to do this? Sorry. T S D, can you help me? Well, if not, this is a video that was made by the FYI and showed in twenty nineteen. And it basically talks about what goes on here, what the role of the Indiana Recovery Alliance is in our community. And if I could go back to the slideshow, I'll just move on and skip the video. So
He's he's working on it.
So what what we are looking for is we would like to purchase for the Indiana Recovery Alliance one used van that we've been able to find for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, when we originally submitted the grant, there was another grant available that indicated that through the state that they would provide a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the kind of recovery van that the Indiana Recovery Alliance has. So we asked the state for a hundred thousand and that we would match it with thirty thousand. For some reason, the state caught what they thought we were going to match it with for a total of a hundred and twenty thousand. We can't find anything that will suit for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, not even something that's grossly used. The best thing that we can find is a used van that is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This particular van is only two years old. It has less than forty five hundred miles on it. And we think it's something that could last for many years. Also, because of the condition it's in, it could be going out to other places that that Larry just can't get to because Larry's just falling apart. And this, one of the things that that I wish we'd been able to show the video, sorry, but meeting people where they are is critical. There are people, first of all, that don't have transportation to come to the Indiana Recovery Alliance or other places. So the more that we can reach out to people, the better our outcomes are going to be. And these are evidence based practices. So if we can put up eighty thousand dollars, we will get a hundred thousand dollars from the state. The other is a new home for the Indiana Recovery Alliance. We have identified a property property on the west side of town. It seems to be zoned correctly. We've gone through phase one environmental study of it already, ready to move on to phase two. And we had estimated a new home would cost over half a million dollars. I know that seems like a lot. But the state was willing to give us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that. And that would mean that we would need to put up two hundred thousand dollars from our opioid settlement money. And we have that. We have that money. Doing something like that will allow the money that IRA raises, instead of going for rent, they can use that then for staff and for other outreach programs that they're doing. So over the course of the the two year grant, also the Monroe County Health Department will receive up to a hundred and two thousand dollars as part of this grant. We they've asked us to put up fifteen thousand dollars from our opioid settlement money to do that, which again is a tremendous amount back for what we would put in. And then for each month that we report anything, we get we get paid by the state for reporting what we're doing. We'll get a thousand dollars a month. So we could receive up to five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars from the state if we would spend a bit of our own money. So what does it mean? We would have a reliable outreach van, meeting people where they are. They have a van also. This van would provide other services other than what they can provide right now in terms of some of the the testing that they could do and and things like that. And the place that has the van right now is willing to customize it to make sure that it's it's what we need. And I should tell you too that Larry originally was an ice cream truck. It was not purpose built to serve as an outreach van like this. IRA will have a much larger space and they'll be able to do other things. They would like to do group meetings, for example, and start to look at a recovery oriented community. And then, of course, the harm reduction that we provide should make a difference in reducing Hep C and any HIV outbreaks. And this also puts more people on the road to recovery. And that's one of the things that we've been talking about, all the things related to our jail and what we're looking at. We're looking at treatment options. This is one of the ways that you get people into treatment. Harm reduction is five times more effective at getting people into treatment than almost anything else. So this is, I think, important to the community. So like I said, through various efforts, the state is willing to provide up to five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. We would have to provide a match of seven, two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And the sooner those funds are allocated, the sooner we can move on the things that we'd like to do. I'm convinced and Bree can talk to this later or H Purdy, I think, is online. She can jump in and talk about this, but this is not this isn't even account for the money that we received in the first year of our opioid settlement money. We also know that this matches the kinds of things that are you're allowed to do with this money. And and these are lives. These are lives that we can save with all this. And so I don't know what other questions you might have, but happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. I I'm sure we do. And it looks like Counselor McKim will get us started.
Thank you very much. I am in adding up the numbers that you had showed that we'd have to spend from local monies. It was it came up to about a little bit more like two ninety five.
It might be. I was having Ms. Purdy inform me that I had some stuff wrong. I was sitting in the back trying to upgrade stuff. So if if I'm a little off, I do apologize. We've hit those straightened out for you. But again, even that is less than the first year of the settlement money. And and we have not received the settlement from all the groups that we that the state anticipates getting the settlement from. We may end up with double what we what we initially receive would be be receiving. And in the end, that's what over, how many million, Bree, do you have that at your fingertips?
I do have it. So again, the grand totals I have right now are estimated because there are settlements that aren't finalized. So the unrestricted funding is estimated to be one million, three hundred and forty nine thousand, ninety four dollars and twenty two cents. And then the abatement restricted funding is three million, five hundred and ninety seven thousand, five hundred and five dollars, eighty two cents. We will get an additional amount that's also restricted. It's really Steinsville's abatement portion that we add to our restricted funding. It's just another forty seven hundred, but.
And sorry, my my point was not to nitpick you.
No, no.
Sorry, it was actually to ask about, just to confirm that the idea is that all of this match could be paid out of the restricted portion?
Yes. It all it I went through the all the definitions of what qualifies. And so much of this is harm reduction. It's outreach. It's gets people into treatment. It matches all those.
And so have we actually received all the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three amounts? I know we're sort of blending the two topics, but.
That's okay. I'm happy to jump in. Okay. So I was able to contact somewhat the attorney working on this at the Attorney General's Office and she was lovely. I provided her contact information. So if we have further questions, it's easy. But we are still waiting on the additional settlement monies from those settlements pending and they still expect to get those in twenty twenty three and distribute. So that's why our twenty twenty three. So that's why our twenty twenty-three settlement monies received have been off much less than expected. So I was able to confirm that. Um, now they it could still fluctuate. I mean, it's we don't anticipate anything going down. However, we we do anticipate more coming, so.
But we do. It looks like I'm I'm sorry. I'm also looking at the numbers that you provided in our in our packet. We we do expect approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in restricted money essentially by the end of this year. Is that approximately correct?
Um, well, total, yes. If you're looking at twenty-two and twenty-three, is that what you're looking at? Yes, yes, absolutely.
We haven't spent any yet.
No, nothing has been spent, just some kind of obligated at this point.
Right. But but I guess what I'm what I'm getting is it sounds like if this is, let's say, it's even as high as three hundred thousand, it's less than half of what we should have in the abated portion by the end of this year.
Sure. I I mean, I was told it's expected now until we receive it. Yes. But yes, we still have it. I mean, the cash balances still cover what we need, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, uh, Counselor Iverson?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Githens, uh, for your presentation. And and just so that we know, I I think the Monroe County Commissioners have made sure that an S S P exists here in Monroe County, and we're one of eight, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're only one of eight communities in the whole state that are engaged in this type of life-saving work.
We're one of eight counties, and we have to every two years reauthorize that to make it happen. And there have been counties that had it in place and then they pulled back.
That's right.
Including the county immediately to our south.
So first of all, for for those in the recovery community and for the rest of us, thank you for doing that. It's really important. Secondly, uh, the based on the the slides that you showed us, um, particularly I'm particularly interested in the building for I R A. Could you talk a little bit more about how that building could fit into plans for uh, an I R X or an R C O here in Monroe County?
Well, this is the building is out on the west side of town on a bus line, first of all, which is important, again, for transportation reasons. From what I can tell, it's not that far from where the new beacon facility is proposed. It's got its own parking. They would have control over things. Um, and I think it just it fits in so many ways because I think there are people that at times when they're ready to go into recovery, we we know there's still a lot of stigma. We know that. And so sometimes there are people who are embarrassed to be seen going in. And so the the more that we can make them feel safe, make them feel good about what they're doing, I think the better our community will be. And we we we, for me, you know, I I was looking at the claims for tomorrow that every week that the Commissioners have to do this. Part of those claims are for things like CASA, for for our guardian ad litem, for all these other things. If we can help people into recovery, we're saving not only that individual, we're saving families. And to me, that's another piece of this.
And ju- uh, just a quick follow-up. Uh, so is this building large enough that it could accommodate I R A and other organizations? Or would this building be solely for the use of the I R A, Indiana Recovery Alliance?
At this point, the plan is it would just be for the Indiana Recovery Alliance. But it would have meeting rooms, it would have rooms so that if you wanted to be tested for different things, if you've got, I'm not sure what all they're gonna do. I don't want to overstate because I might say the wrong thing here. But i- in the video, and I'm I'll send you guys a link to it. You see the inside of their current building and it's stacked with boxes. They don't have as much room as we have here in this front row of seats to meet with people. And I I think that's a hindrance. And if they get huge supplies in, like we like to do when we buy in bulk, right, they're really in trouble.
Counselor McKen.
So would the I R A be the the owner of record of this building?
Yes, yes. And and um Jeff Cockrell and our legal department has been working with their attorney. We probably will have some kind of maybe five-year covenant on it. But beyond that, it it would go to them. And again, the with our syringe services program, that's those are grants that come to the county that we've been getting, but then we subcontract with the Indiana Recovery Alliance to operate our syringe services program. Um, and they work closely with um our health department in the past. Melanie Bischlag was the one out driving Larry at meeting with people.
Okay, thanks. And actually, the the covenant question was gonna be my next one. If you've already answered.
I had a a question I wanted to ask. So does I R A do uh anything beyond uh opiates? Like, for instance, would do that do do anything around meth or or any other uh substance? Or alcohol, I don't know.
Well, you know, I don't know the answer. I will try to get that. I know that right now we're worried about other types of opioids uh where there is fentanyl and fentanyl test strips, where we're worried about the new xylazine drug that's, you know, coming out. We know that there have been deaths up in Indianapolis. We're pretty sure that the xylazine is here. Fortunately, we don't think we've seen any deaths due to that. That's not an opioid, but it still is an illicit drug.
Yeah. One thing that strikes me is when you're talking about um access, about people being tempted to go get access, um, do the label, the stigma, et et cetera. It create uh sending here's an alcoholic who has not drank since two thousand and seven. Anything I'd go to would not have a giant label on it. Um, and I would wonder about anything that might have a label, how that would affect me as a professional, like official, you name it. So it might be some good food for thought down the road for you and I R A to consider access points for those who do want that um that discretion in that, eh, you know, they're 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 trying to get to recovery treatment. They need that to be vital. But we all know that humans react to, this is difficult for me to admit, right? Or this is difficult for me to be, see, I don't want to risk this. I don't want to risk that. I don't know. Just some thoughts of greater minds than me will figure that out, I'm sure.
And you got Counselor Munson.
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Githens, I've heard questions from various people about to what extent uh I R A collects data for evidence-based practices uh to help them with the success of their programs. Do you know anything about this?
I don't believe that they do their own research, but I think that they follow evidence-based practices that uh they read about. And uh I know that the folks that are involved with them go to national conferences. They're out, they're doing a lot of different things uh to try to make a difference here in our own community. But in terms of them doing their own research, I they may collect data, but it's not research data the way you and I think about research data.
Okay, so thank you.
Um, granted. Um, yes, when uh speaking with the health department regarding this uh grant dollars and housework, um she did, she at the time, anyway, maybe it's been worked out, she didn't think the health department would be overseeing this grant. So i- if that is the case, who is going to oversee it? It's gonna be somebody in our legal department or or who will be doing that? That's number one. Uh, number two, she said that that um I didn't write down what she said. I'm going by memory, so I hope I'm not misspeaking. But they are able to track the number of uh syringes that they order or they receive, whatever. But that she believes that since they will be a separate and apart from the health department, that they could order their syringes separately. And is that as you understand it?
I believe that they can. Um, it I I don't want to say for sure. Again, I'm gonna have to go back to the the meeting and take notes on on the things that I need to find out about. With the first question, um, it will be administered through the Commissioner's Office. So.
Okay, so it would seem to me that um someone that it needs to be tracking the numbers and how many they're, you know, sending out and how many they're picking up, how many is left wandering around the ground someplace for the residents to pick up. And I think the community wants the answers to that. And um, so I I do have some questions on this as well.
One of the things that that does happen with some of the outreach is that uh needle disposal boxes are also given out so that we can keep some of the things out of off the ground and away from things. We have to remember too that in Indiana, you can still be arrested for possession of a syringe. And so when people um are in an uncomfortable position, for whatever reason, sometimes they will just drop the syringes rather than be arrested for possession.
Yep, it's good context to remember. I assume, I maybe I shouldn't assume, there are reporting requirements for the grant. So that might be where one would start to determine what reporting and data you might collect on the grant, right?
Basically, if I understand this correctly, if we pay for something, we send in the receipt and we get reimbursed.
I see, so it's okay.
It's a pretty easy, at least that's my understanding from the scope of work that we saw.
Wow, all right. Well, I mean, it might be worth thinking about a little bit of evaluation so that you can, you know, look at outcomes, but um I'm gonna go with Counselor Crossley and then Counselor Iverson.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Githens, for presenting this. Um, I had a couple of questions. You have mentioned, I guess, uh, Counsel Iverson had just said something about one of eight counties, and then you had said um some counties are pulling back, and I think I mouthed E Y. Do you happen to know why they pull back?
I don't want to.
Ah, okay, I got it.
I know that Lawrence County had it in place, and then their Commissioners voted not to renew it. That was one of the counties. And I know that in Scott County, um, there were problems at the county level, and so I believe it's just Austin in Scott County that's now doing a their own syringe services program, and they're doing it in conjunction with the Indiana Recovery Alliance.
And then you have mentioned, again, um, like when we report, the state gives us money for the things that we report on. Can you say how much that is again?
It's up to five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's basically a two-to-one match, which is a pretty good deal, especially since this is a good use of money that we can't go out and pave roads with and we can't go out, you know, and replace light bulbs with. Uh, it's it's directed specifically for this kind of use.
Yes. And I would just like to say, I I think I appreciate this. As we are talking about, you know, the the big topic that nobody really wants to say um in terms of what we need to do in in terms of um building a new facility, this is one of the ways that we, I think, had envisioned on J F A C is trying to think outside the box to reduce recidivism. And so like working with groups like the I R A um is something that would be extremely helpful. And I think it would be very informative and educational um for us to try to and I know you can't do that, and it would be great to have somebody here from them. And I've pulled up their website and I've gone to some of the events that they've had. Um, because we often hear a lot of terminology that is very harmful um and of ignorance. And so I think it would be really helpful for us to um really pay attention to this and and really focus on like what they are doing and how the county could collaborate together. And then I'd also just like to say in terms of us spending the opioid settlement money, I'm glad we are having this conversation. Um, I think it would be really great for council and uh Commissioners to work together because I know that there are um departments such as the probation office had mentioned that they too wanted to you had a vision for um use of the opioid settlement money to further help them with their particular department and their needs too. So it would be really helpful for us to think about that. And then I guess on my wish list, my council wishlist, um, as we talk about buying, uh, you know, a building for I R A, I just think of um, you know, other things that we can do in terms of other groups and organizations that have said, hey, we could do X, Y, Z, but we need this. And they obviously are affected by, you know, substance use disorders and things like that. So I I'm really excited to have this conversation, and I look forward for the positive um collaboration between both bodies because one can't do one without the other, and I think this is a great start. So thank you.
Thank you. I I would point out too that um I've invited all you to a meeting next week for the integrated re- reentry and correctional support or I R X programming. And one of the things that is a key component of that is recovery-oriented communities. And I think that this feeds into some of that recovery-oriented com- community that we'll need to have in place to put that in. And again, that kind of program is aimed at reducing recidivism and getting people back into the community in a positive way, in some of the same ways that Troy Hatfield was talking to you just a little while ago.
Uh, Counselor Iverson and then Counselor McKen.
Uh, just real quick, wanted to uh clarify some things. Uh, if you're interested in the conversations about abstinence versus harm reduction, uh, S U D A C meets uh once a month, and we have those types of debates. It's it's a really interesting time. So if you're interested in those and the way our community is moving forward, please do uh put uh the Substance Use Advisory Commission on your calendar. And then I did receive a a note from uh one of the members of our health department pointing out there is a difference between the I R A, the Indiana Recovery Alliance, and the S S P. S S P is run out of our health department. I R A is a is a nonprofit. And that both organizations talk to folks and prefer referrals, provide referrals to um other organizations, such as A A N A, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So they're they're really busy and making sure they're covering the gambit of uh recovery.
They they work very collaboratively.
Yeah, yeah.
They really do. That the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission meets at noon on the third Friday of the month here in the Nat U Hill Room.
So since Counselor Crossley mentioned council wish lists, I, you know, and and I've said this before, and I think so, some others have as well. We are spending a lot of additional money this year on our jail contract, some of which is directly some of which is directly related to substance use uh and mitigating substance use. And I I would really like us to spend some of this opioid settlement money to help cover the the additional costs of the the jail contractor within the guidelines of the program. And I'm not saying that's in in place of uh of the I R A grant because I it's clear that we can do both.
I think we can too.
But yeah, okay, good. I just want to ma- make sure that uh we have a path forward. This is money we have already, we we need to spend. And let let's let's.
It doesn't help anyone until you've been just sitting in the van. Counselor Munson.
So um, I just want to follow up. I I was going to say the same thing about about the jail program needs. But I also had a chance to talk recently with uh uh Judge Decoffe about uh the problem-solving court. And I think it'd be very important to invite the the Board of Judges to be represented in this discussion about opioid settlement uh funding because they they have needs that they uh have identified that relate to this. So thank you.
Thank you.
So one thing I wasn't completely aware of until today was you have already received this grant.
We have.
And already obligated these funds, so.
We would like, because of the timeframe, I couldn't come before you and get this all approved and and settled, especially because it takes a month just to get on your regular agenda sometimes.
It was budget season.
But it it's it it was too good of an opportunity to pass up. And so if I I don't want to give this money, I don't want to not spend the money from the state. Uh, we received some, one of the top awards, especially for a county our size. And um I think it's because we're looking at some novel stuff that other people just aren't doing.
And I I have seen uh Ms. Purdy's comments in the chat regarding info that she's shared. That's that's the information that made me start to realize this was already a happened thing. So we don't have a request for an appropriation on at this time, so.
No, but we'll be coming back to you with that. Um, and. No, but we'll be coming back to you with that. Um, and I will try to get some of these other things to you while I'll work with Nick Foyle, who's the executive director of the Indiana Recovery Alliance, and some of the other folks that are involved. But I I do also want to acknowledge the work of the folks in the health department. Lori Kelly made her staff available. She attended some of our meetings. Ms. Ford in her office helped me with some of the formatting for things when I ran into trouble, but especially Kathy Hewitt and Melanie Feschlag were critical to getting this work done. And in a very timely, professional manner. So.
So to be clear, you're just telling us you've done this and letting us know that you've done that. And it's not.
Giving you an update.
Well, at a certain point, the appropriation will come to us. So we'll, this, this is an opportunity for discussion.
That's what I thought, we're doing discussion. But I do recall it being presented at the commissioners meeting, and that's the reason why I called the health department. And so I'm trying to figure out where we are.
So they've received it and it's, it's all done. And it would be very inconvenient for them if we did not appropriate when they came to ask us. Granted, we have been a little busy the past month, and I recognize that we might not have been easy to reach. But I just, I did want, I didn't realize that until the their office, Ms. Purdy sent the information that it was fully, fully executed and and happened.
Yes, so I I do want to work with you all, and I think some of these other ideas about working with the health costs within the jail, I think those are completely, completely reasonable. Um, and so again, I think we should use that money to better conditions for residents of our community.
To that, to that end, and I don't want to create a cumbersome process, but it might be a good idea if maybe a commissioner and a council person or two um hammered out sort of a plan. I mean, this being the foundational thing. And then with the rest of the funds, what are we anticipating spending them on and when? Because we do know we get a tapering off of these these funds. Just to kind of make sure that we're all making the same thing.
Well, and I I think too, we have to stop and say, ten years ago, did we know anything about fentanyl? No. Five years ago, did we know about psilocybin? No. We have to also think about what might be coming down the pike. And so I don't think it's reasonable to obligate everything at this moment, knowing that this is like, is it an eighteen year payout that we get on this? Is that, is that right? We don't know what's gonna happen.
With the money, the money is a lot less after the first couple of years. So it's not, you know, it's not huge. However, I think we can safely say that we will need programming money for for substance use in, you know, within our jail system. And that, that to me seems like a logical, is everything gonna go to that? I just, I guess, wanted to make sure that we were considering this and not just assuming that it's available for our own ideas on what that means. I wasn't trying to hem us in so much as just remind us to stay on target. Yes.
I did want to point out that probation um could uh require or part of the plan of some people who are have, you know, come out of the jail to use the Indiana uh recover, you know, Recovery Alliance. And so therefore, it would actually become an extension of the programs associated with incarceration and and um and, you know, uh rehabilitation. So I think that, I I'm pretty sure that's what's occurring now to some extent. Um, they're working with people who have, you know.
You mean it's all part of a bigger system.
Yeah, I want to say it's a component part is basically what I'm trying to say.
I like, I mean, I like the idea of I, a a coun- a counselor and Commissioner Givens and Judge Decoff, for example. Sitting down and kind of hammering out some ideas.
I'd like to have Bree from the auditor's office with us too. She she notes those numbers cold, so.
Counselor Hawk, right, I I just would caution people uh to recognize that um I do not believe that we can order somebody to go to the separate nonprofit group. You could suggest, or they might say you have to go into training, or you may have to do X, Y, Z. But to tell them, oh, we picked out this nonprofit, we want you to go to, I think the courts would right away say, no, we can't do that. You know, it's not, it's not like something that's, like even if it's offered in the jail, it's only offered, you cannot force the inmates to go to that. We ha- we hope that they will accept that o- opportunity, but you can't force them to do it. You can say, well, we could let you out earlier if you do X, Y.
I can say all I want. Other comments or ideas, questions?
It would be great to have folks sitting down and hammering out some of the future of of these funds. I I I let, Kate, that's a good idea. I mean, Counsel Wilson, that's a great idea.
Thank you. Um, we'll be in touch then.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
No, I, are are we still gonna continue talking about opioid?
We have more that we can talk about, yes.
Settlement.
And and I don't want her to leave. I was just like wrapping up that piece.
I didn't know if you were gonna continue the grilling here. No, I I planned on staying, but I thought this, at this point, it was probably Ms. Gregory's turn to take over.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for handling the brutal part, Commissioner. Um, so I, oh. Are you ready for me? Is it okay if I jump in or?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. Okay, so I put together just a summary page um about the facts um with regard to this opioid settlement and litigation. So there's, I'm not gonna, you know, go through verbatim, but just kind of want to walk you through some of the information I put together. Um, first, I do want to know that I'm, I would love to be part of a group and assist, um, if that's a possibility. And um I know the counsel attorney just mentioned she was also willing to be part of that and assist with the legal aspects. Um, so I think I already noted that the settlement status is ongoing with some of the um settlements still pending. So the estimates are, are the um funding totals are just estimates at this point. So um I do have the, you know, most up to date information from the Attorney General's website that I provided in this summary document for you. Um, I provided a link to the, or an email for the Attorney General's um attorney handling this um case. And um also um links to funding um use information. So the State Board of Accounts did um provide um guidance that the unrestricted portion may be spent in any manner the county chooses. So um that's simple. Now, the restricted um abatement portion um is controlled by the settlement document. They gave an extensive document with approved uses, which as long as it's within reason, it sounds like, you know, like anything that's unacceptable um use would work as well toward opioid um mitigation. But um they want you to stick to the core strategies that I noted there. Um, and then they did provide like approved uses for treatment, prevention, and other strategies as well. Um, the Attorney General's website has a a ton of good information. Um, so that link is included. And the S, the State Board of Accounts, the SBOA, um, did state in the name and letter a lot of back and forth um that um the code governing this does not assign oversight to any department in the county. So just as normal business, um, you know, the the commissioners approve any contract, um, the council appropriates. So it's just, you know, normal working relationship um between the two bodies. So we do have annual reporting requirements with this as well. So I just have to report on how the money was spent, provide some documentation, which my office will handle. Um, current balances, and as I noted before, um, this does not include all of the twenty twenty three funding, but the restricted portion um fund balance is currently five hundred and twenty three thousand, seventy four dollars and eighty seven cents. The unrestricted um fund balance is one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty four cents. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you need any more detail.
Thank you for pulling that all together for us. Um, it was very, very helpful, especially being able to read through it. Um, go right ahead.
Yeah, I I also want to echo that. The this three-page brief, three-page brief on page eighty-five of the packet is really, really helpful. It's very well done. Thank you for doing that.
Counselor, um, McKinnon.
So I, thank you very much. I I agree, it was very helpful. Um, I have a request, I guess, that's probably jointly for Ms. Gregory and Ms. Turner King. Could we, this back to the jail contract, would you be able to kind of, by reading the jail contract and understanding the restrictions, determine how much of that uh jail contract uh per per year we'd be able to spend? We'd be able to pay out of the abated um portion of the the settlement funds? I mean, you don't have to have the answer now.
I I I think, yeah, we can definitely review in between us, um, determine what is appropriate and eligible.
And I just got from the, or from Advanced Correctional, a job description for the two new requested um positions. So I can look at it with Bree and determine if it falls within the restricted. And I requested some additional information from Advance that they said they could get to me in the next week or so.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Did we ever determine whether or not um there there was a bidding process for that contract? Okay, sorry about that. Um, one other thing, there is um an auditor's conference coming up in two weeks, and they are going to present on um opioid as well, so.
I mean, we have time, you know, this contract isn't even till next year, but yeah, that, I I I really think that it would be entirely appropriate for uh to pay some out of that.
Counselor Hawk.
Uh, it seems to me that we could cover more than one year, uh, since it is a contract. Cause we're gonna need help in trying to get the budget to work for the following year as well. So if, I mean, if that would be possible. And and I believe we could cover the whole contract because um so many, so much of that contract uh is like running people back and forth to the hospital and whatever. So it it could be for any number of reasons. It could be medical or it could be opioid or whatever. So I mean, I I hope we'll look at that and see if we can't cover just as much as we can. Get out of that and that'll free up that four hundred and twenty five thousand that we moved over to help with the salaries. That's my hope.
Of course, there's not enough money there to handle the entire contract, even if it wasn't all fit in. But yeah, that was, I mean, that was.
You're talking about four twenty five of the money in the, in the.
Oh, you're talking about just the portion that we, the the new portion that we moved over to that correction.
Right, I'm just saying that opioid settlement, I'm hoping we'll use it as much as we can for the jail, free up the money to to help. You do agree? Yes. Well, that's one thing we agree much in life.
Any other comments, um, Counselor Iverson?
And I I completely agree that this should all, should be used for the jail and help reduce those costs to to the county. I I also want to point out that one of the core strategies is for MET, uh, medications, assistance, treatment, distribution, and other opioid-related treatments. And that that currently those services are offered uh outside of the the carceral system. Uh, so uh that would be an interesting, uh, that that came up a lot during JPEC, just a lot during JPEC. Is how how do we invest in treatment outside of the jail? And no, there were no easy answers. That was the meeting that went on for three and a half hours. So I I I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say that and leave it right there.
Yep. Yeah, thanks. That's a good reminder.
Yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Yep, uh, other questions or comments? Points of discussion, right? We are at item sixteen and then um then we have the readings of the budget. Do do counselors want to take a ten-minute recess? Yes, we are going to take a ten-minute recess. We will be back at seven forty-six. I'm just gonna start passing stuff out. It'll be fine.
Yeah, you can tell me whenever you want.
Thank you. I will, I will be asking. Yeah, sorry. It's okay. It's all right. All right, we. We are returning now from our recess. And, um, we are at item number sixteen on the agenda, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. And this was tabled from our last meeting. We tend, um, to keep this item here in case something comes forward. Um, we don't have to re-advertise and that's what we're going to do again this evening. So I would like to table this item to the October twenty fourth work session.
Second.
Thank you. Any, uh, objections, discussions? Okay, all in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. We are tabled. Okay, now, we will have the first reading of the twenty twenty four budgets for the Monroe Fire Protection District, Monroe County Solid Waste Management District and Monroe County. There is a lot of reading involved in this portion of the meeting. And I would like to ask some of my colleagues to assist in the reading um, as we go. The first one up for grabs is the Monroe Fire Protection District Budget. Who would like to read that? It's an easy one. It's a short one. I'm gonna pick Counselor Munson. I think you have a copy of it. It should be, um, highlighted in a light green in the top corner. And would you like?
Here it is. Here it is. Ordinance for appropriations and tax rates. Number two oh two three dash thirty nine. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District for the year ending December thirty one, twenty twenty four, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set out of the several funds herein named for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. And then I'm just going to list the fund codes. Okay. Fund code eight six oh three, fund name special fire general, adopted budget fourteen million, nine hundred and ninety five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Adopted tax levy nine million, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point two five four six. Fund code eight six nine one, special cune fire. Adopted budget one million, one hundred and seventy eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty six dollars. Adopted tax levy one million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point three three three. Totals, adopted budget sixteen million, one hundred and seventy four thousand and six dollars. Adopted tax levy ten million, two hundred and twenty nine thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point two eight seven nine. And I believe that concludes the fire protection.
One down.
Or, first reading.
Yes, that's the first reading. And, um, are there any further questions or comments from council regarding this budget?
And we do not need a second on that. It's just a reading.
It's just a reading. We're just reading. No questions? All right, the next one is the, um, thank you for being here. Uh, the next one is the solid waste management district budget, um. Would Counselor Hawk like to read one?
Me too.
Thank you.
This is ordinance for appropriations and tax rates. Be ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District for the year ending December thirty one, twenty twenty four, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Lose track. Such sums appropriate shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. And the first fund number, fund code is one two one five, the non-reverting capital projects. The adopted budget is zero, the adopted tax levy is zero, and the tax rate is also zero. Uh, the next fund, eight two one oh, special solid waste management, three million, sixty three thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars for the adopted budget. The adopted tax levy, two million, one hundred and seventy eight thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars for adopted tax rate of point oh two six oh. Next fund is eight two eight three, solid waste district debt service. Adopted budget three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Adopted tax levy, two hundred and ninety two thousand, six, five hundred and sixty five dollars with a tax rate of point oh oh three five. For a total adopted budget of three million, three hundred and sixty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars. And total adopted tax levy of two million, four hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy eight dollars for adopted tax rate of point oh two nine five.
Thank you. Are there any questions, um, or comments regarding the solid waste management district budget?
And just to, uh, let folks know that Tom McGlasson is, should be available on Zoom if anyone has any questions.
Oh, okay. I don't see any questions. All right. In that case, we will move on to, uh, the Monroe County twenty twenty four budget. And Counselor McKim, would you please start that, um, and read through the, the non-home rule funds?
Sounds good. Uh, be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and were set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses in Monroe County, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Uh, these are the, um, the DLGF approved funds. Zero one zero one general adopted budget forty eight million, seven hundred and seventy seven thousand, two hundred and twenty three dollars. Adopted tax levy twenty two million, one hundred and thirty three thousand, one hundred and ninety seven dollars and adopted tax rate zero point two two four four dollars. Uh, one oh two election registration fund, adopted budget one million, seven hundred and twenty two dollar, uh, one million, seven hundred and twenty two thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars. Tax levy, one million, four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty one dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point zero one four three dollars. Fund zero one two four, two thousand and fifteen reassessment, adopted budget eight hundred and forty five thousand, nine hundred and ninety seven dollars. Adopted tax levy, seven hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point zero zero seven two dollars. Zero one eight two debt service, adopted budget five million dollars. Adopted tax levy, four million, four hundred and twenty four thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars. Adopted tax rate is zero point zero four four nine dollars. Zero two five four local income tax, adopted budget three million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty nine dollars. Uh, adopted tax levy, zero dollars, adopted tax rate, zero dollars. Uh, fund zero six one six convention visitors bureau, adopted budget two million, five hundred and twenty two thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero dollars, adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, zero seven zero two highway, adopted budget six million, eight hundred and seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty four dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero, adopted tax rate, zero. Zero seven zero three highway special, adopted budget, zero, adopted tax levy, zero, adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, fund zero seven zero six local road and street, one, uh, adopted budget, one million, twenty thousand dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero, adopted tax rate, zero. Uh, fund zero seven nine zero, community bridge, uh, adopted budget, two million, two million, seventy five thousand, five hundred and ninety nine dollars. Adopted tax levy, two million, one hundred and thirty seven. Adopted tax levy two million one hundred thirty seven thousand six hundred eighty five dollars. Adopted tax rate uh zero point zero two one three dollars. Uh, county major bridge zero seven nine two uh, sorry county major bridge. Adopted budget one million eight hundred thousand one dollar, uh adopted tax levy three million three hundred forty two thousand fifteen dollars. And adopted tax rate zero point zero three 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 dollars. Uh, health, zero eight zero one, adopted budget nine hundred eighty two thousand five hundred nine dollars. Adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. One three one zero park non-reverting capital, adopted budget sixty thousand dollars, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. Uh, two one zero two aviation airport, uh adopted budget one million five hundred three thousand three hundred thirty dollars. Adopted tax levy one million seventy five thousand five hundred seventy six dollars, adopted tax rate zero point zero one zero nine dollars. Uh, two three nine one community capital development. Uh, adopted budget three million seven hundred eighty nine thousand four hundred twenty six dollars, adopted tax levy three million three hundred forty two thousand fifteen dollars. Adopted tax rate zero point zero three 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 dollars. Uh, funds uh two four zero two economic development, adopted budget ten million seven hundred twenty five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Adopted tax levy zero, uh adopted tax rate zero. For a total of adopted budget ninety one million six hundred thirty three thousand four hundred thirty eight dollars. Adopted tax levy thirty eight thousand five hundred seventy three thousand nine hundred seventy dollars and adopted tax rate zero point three eight nine six dollars. Oh, sorry, for adopt, total adopted tax levy thirty eight million five hundred seventy three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars.
Unless, I didn't listen to that one.
The debt service fund number is zero one eight zero.
There we go. Thank you. I'm gonna continue with the Monroe County budget with the home ruled funds. Those are the funds not reviewed by DLGF. So for fund code nine five zero zero extradition and sheriff's assistance. Uh, adopted budget of five hundred thirty eight dollars. Fund code nine five zero one surveyors corner perpetuation adopted budget. Two thousand. Two hundred one thousand eight hundred seven dollars. Fund code nine five zero two local public health services, one one six one. With one million five hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred thirty three dollars. Nine five zero three Monroe County nine one one fund. Adopted budget eight hundred sixty seven thousand. Fund code nine five zero four Monroe County Convention Center debt, six hundred thirty six thousand dollars. Nine five zero five auditors and eligible deductions, three hundred fifty five thousand two hundred seventy two dollars. Fund nine five zero eight user fee jury pay thirty six thousand five hundred dollars. Fund nine five zero nine user fees juvenile probation, eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars. Fund nine five one zero user fees adult probation. Two hundred fifty nine thousand seven hundred eighty eight dollars. Nine five one one user fees project income job. Six hundred forty nine thousand fifty three dollars. Fund nine five one two supplemental PD services, one million two hundred sixty five thousand seven hundred sixty four dollars. Nine five one four user fees, oops, skipped one, nine five one three clerks record perpetuation. One hundred thirty nine thousand nine hundred sixty eight dollars. Fund nine five one four user fees diversion prosecutor prosecution. Okay, one hundred forty six thousand eight hundred thirty eight dollars. Fund nine five one five user fees court alcohol and drug. Two hundred seventeen thousand six hundred ten dollars. Fund nine five one six local health maintenance, thirty two thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. Fund nine five one seven emergency planning right to know sixteen thousand fifty dollars. Fund nine five one nine misdemeanor uh county corrections, community corrections. Uh, one hundred fifty one thousand three hundred dollars. Fund nine five two one alternative dispute resolution fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Fund nine five two two sales disclosure county share ninety five thousand five hundred ninety five dollars. Nine five two three convention center capital improvement maintenance one hundred thousand dollars. Fund nine five two four county offender transportation three thousand dollars. Fund nine five two five local health department trust account, seventy six thousand one hundred sixty five dollars. Fund nine five two six user fees problem solving courts fifty three thousand seven dollars. Fund nine five two seven west side economic development Richland Township TIF. Two million two hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars. Fund nine five two eight forty six corridor economic development Bloomington Township TIF, two hundred sixty six thousand seven hundred forty four dollars. Fund nine five two nine Fullerton Pike Economic Development TIF. One hundred thirty eight thousand one hundred one dollars. Fund nine five three zero plat book forty three thousand four hundred thirty three dollars. Nine five three one convention center operating, five hundred ninety four thousand dollars. Nine five three two user fees cable franchise, five hundred thirteen nine hundred thirty dollars. Fund nine five three five PSAP interlocal two million five hundred eighty five thousand. Nine five four three public health emergency fund twenty thousand dollars. Nine five four four identification security protection, eighteen thousand dollars. Nine five four eight park non-reverting operating, two hundred forty three six hundred thirty five dollars. Two hundred forty three thousand six hundred thirty five dollars. Fund nine five five one reporters. Records perpetuation. Three hundred eighty five thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. Fund nine five five two storm water management, two million four hundred eighty five thousand two hundred twenty two dollars. Nine five five nine county elected officials training twenty thousand dollars. Nine five seven one pub- public safety local income tax, three million nine hundred sixty two thousand twenty four dollars. Nine five eight eight federal award title four D. Five fifty seven thousand eighty six dollars. Nine five eight nine curry profile TIF, two hundred four thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for a total of. Twenty million six hundred six thousand seven hundred twelve dollars. That concludes the Monroe County twenty twenty four reading. Are there any questions or comments on that budget? Yes.
So, so first of all, on the debt service. Five million dollars is that? Are we simply advertising high because that was the the? The bond we just.
It's, yeah, it's outside the levy and it just doesn't, they'll adjust once we close and they have the information, so. I just didn't um change that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that every, everybody and particularly the public is clear that we just approved a three, one million dollar bond, not a.
And councillor Hawk, did you have?
Right. I believe these are the numbers that were entered into gateway and we've made uh several changes since that. Uh, or are these, are these some brand new numbers? I think they're.
I apologize, I was going to um clarify that um I went over all the um. The uh four Bs and then the um ordinance today with the auditor. And we adjusted some operating balances, so you'll see some fluctuation there.
So the adopted budget for general, we believe it's going to be forty eight seven 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 two two three. I mean. I hadn't heard the total because so many changes have been made, and so I wasn't real sure. You know, as I said earlier today, I don't know where we are on the numbers.
This is correct um. The, the only thing that isn't up to date, and I think this is what Ms. Kim is putting her hand up about, um that I just remembered is. Um, the clerk's office has not updated their numbers for the comment. Adjustment.
And the, and the elected.
And elected salary. So those, those things are not included in here and she will have to come back for an appro- an extra appropriation.
Or transfer out of vacancies.
Or that, yes. But everybody else got theirs in.
Right, what, what about the additionals for the uh? The number of hours for attorneys?
That was included, that's all been updated. Yeah, yeah, all the other departments got their information updated. And even including the comments, the clerk's office was not, did not get that information updated, so it is not included.
Yeah, there have been um a lot of adjustments recently, I guess, um which is where you're seeing um the uh budget differences. It's just happened so quickly, it kind of slipped my mind.
Right, uh, we, we also know that we have other numbers coming in. We still don't have the numbers from the assessor's office. I, I would sure hope that would have already been in by now.
Are, are, what are you talking about?
We haven't approved the, any of that though, right?
Yeah, we haven't seen anything like that yet, we other than.
Yeah, the assessor's office is still in process in terms of. I guess she wanted to have her positions.
Are you talking job descriptions?
Yeah, him and I spoke with WIS today and got an update and um WIS is going to provide a memo to pack regarding the assessor's request and their concerns.
Okay.
So, so I guess it's, you know, we, we did receive a um, a, a, a report from FSG that was requested. And so I don't know if this is the appropriate time to kind of discuss that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that would be, that was a surprise.
It was a pleasant surprise.
But he, they didn't have all the information. We need to make sure that we understand the verbiage that they sent.
Yes.
Not just the numbers.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's where the proof is in that pudding.
And they were not. Um, informed about our corrections tax, so that's not in there either. But they, they were very responsive to Bree's request and providing. Up to the minute information at very last. Last minute request, so. I, I, Bree had said um that she let them know too that we plan to. Um. Have a closer relationship in the future. Good.
Right.
So I have, well, so I, 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 if this is the right time, I mean.
Right, be sure and talk about that interest in time, because he didn't adjust that correctly.
Well, I, I don't know correctly, but um, you know, the biggest. Biggest, I guess, my, my observations on this, just, you know, so everybody knows, first of all. Big picture, it looks like we're fine unless and until the full annexation hits from the city, so. Now, he's uh, they, they've clearly uh estimated the annexation impacted. At pretty much the, the maximum that it could be if the city ru- runs the table and everything. Um, but what that does show is that things start to look really bad in twenty twenty six. You know, there's a little bit of a, a, of an effect in twenty twenty five, but when, when it hits the lit. In twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven, that's when, that's when things really plummet, so you know, that's really the, I, I, I would say that's obviously the. The biggest concern. Other than that, we really, um, you know, things look pretty level for the most part. Um, one, one thing I'm not quite sure why they do it this way. Is that if you look, they, they have what they refer to as an assumed spend down level. Which is basically the amount of reversion. It's the percentage of the uh. Or it's the inverse of the amount of reversions. It's the percentage of the budget that they're assuming that uh that we would spend down. And you know, for the general fund, for example, uh, they provide an estimate for ni- at ninety six percent. But if you actually look at the starting and ending balances, they don't use that assumed spend down in their calculation. And instead, they just, they assume we spend it all. Uh, even though they have that calculation, if you look, if you look at the ending balance uh uh for each year. It's the, it's the fully expended budget uh ending balance that gets carried forward to the next year. So, you know, once again, um, we found in the past that, you know, probably that ninety six percent, ninety five percent. Is probably fairly accurate and that still leaves several million dollars of reversions. Now, of course, that, that's, it's up to us as to. Whether or not we allow, you know, how many additional appropriations we're going to allow. Are we gonna allow additional positions to be created? In the middle of the year like we did this year. Um, you know, this, this maybe, we may have to be uh a lot tougher on department heads that want additional positions. Uh, even ones that we like, I mean, even positions that we like.
We like them all equally.
Everybody, life gets a ring.
Yeah, right. Right. The, the other thing, it's a little bit, I, I guess I don't like about the way that um, that FSG does the analysis. Is that each of the levy funds are really treated independently. Rather than as part of a frozen levy, we can kind of mu- move the levy in between funds uh depending on, on what's needed. So, you know, I kind of like the format we've used in the past where we sum up all, all the funds in the frozen levy and work from there. That's, you know, this, this is what they're working with. Then the other question is uh, as councillor Hawk brought up, the. The interest on investments income, if you look at their assumptions there, they're. Assuming. Um, I, they clearly don't have all the interest that we put in for twenty uh twenty twenty four. Uh, in their miscellaneous revenue estimates. Uh, and then only, uh, and then uh. Estimate a five percent increase in twenty twenty five, then they have NA in twenty twenty six. I don't know what they mean by that. Um, but it's, you know, i- i- in reality. For twenty twenty four, we've got a pretty big increase and will probably stay relatively stable in the, in twenty twenty five. And then we're going to see something go down quite a bit.
I was actually confused by that as well because when I um spoke with FSG, um, they were comfortable with the interest revenue. That they had seen um from us through, well, until twenty twenty six, so. Yeah, I think uh maybe that was just an oversight.
Okay. That might be something that they can address in the next, in the next version, take a, a deeper dive into the, into the interest rates.
Are you through? Somebody asked you a question.
Okay.
Okay, uh, in their verbiage that they sent, they did discuss um. The interest rate, uh, but they didn't include the fact that. A lot of this interest is coming in because we're setting on a lot of cash with the ARPA money. And so we know, I mean, we just figured, even if it is a sixteen percent of the. Four million, it was like, uh, when we figure six hundred and forty thousand. So that seems to me we'd have to adjust that then for that. Following year or whatever year that ARPA money is going to be gone. And that, you know, that needs to be looked at. And also the fact that. We borrowed money, so to speak, we took it from some of the other. Funds in the frozen levy and moved it over into, into a pot of money that we thought we could use for the. Um, salary increases and in their uh language, they said, yes, we would have to. Return part of that money to, I believe they did mention the health fund. Now, we had a discussion about that the other day, the council, the Kim, and was it? Um. Did, I guess if their miscellaneous revenue would remain as it is now. And we took a million too, but they've got the same miscellaneous revenue, you got to figure out how much you really had to return. Uh, the following year.
I mean, it looked to me like if they spend the entire appropriation. Then we're gonna wind up with a four hundred thousand dollar or so deficit. And the cash balance at the end of twenty twenty four could still sustain that for another two years without.
Okay, you, uh, you're sure, okay.
Well, I mean, if you look, just uh, go back to our, our four Bs and look at uh. Uh, how much of a shortfall that, or how, how much their budget is minus their miscellaneous revenues. I mean, that's the shortfall, right? If we're not, we're not putting any levy. Then.
Then you're gonna take that out. And also, uh, they were speaking of. Spending down and not, not having as high a levy for the election fund. So, does that mean we're no longer going to do what we had agreed to do a few years ago? I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but what we agreed to do a few years ago. Was to make sure we put in like one fourth of what we thought. was to make sure we put in like one-fourth of what we thought needed to be there for the presidential election, because if we don't budget for it and save for it there in some fashion, we'll have to come up with it because we have to cover the elections. And now, and generally, you can't, um, move from one fund to the other fund during the year, but with the exception of the election fund, because since we have to cover that, we would have to cover it. We'd take it first from the election fund and then we would take it from county general or rainy day or wherever we can get it. So, um, yeah, I like, I like what we had done, what you had done. Council member begin, in looking at the four B so that you could see, okay, this is what it is this year. This is where we move the money. Now here's what it's going to look like the following year and the following year, so we know when. It's just something we understand better. Because when I looked at what FSG sent, and I'm just like, okay, they're talking about concrete and whatever. It just didn't. I studied it and I thought, no, I don't, let go spend any more time on this.
Well, I, you know, so I, I essentially did that. I took our four B format and essentially kind of played it forward for, uh, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six as well. I, after we got the FSG report, I, I sort of wanted to cross check some of my assumptions with
Yeah, right.
with theirs, and I'm just not to the point where I really wanted to, uh, to share this yet. But I was essentially doing kind of essentially what Counselor Hawk was, uh, was suggesting. But I, like I said, I did kind of want to make sure that they're, um, you know, that at least the assumptions that they make, that I could at least figure out if I'm making the same assumptions.
Do we have, the other question is, we should have known by now an update on the local income tax that that was supposed to come from the state budget agency over to DLGF on the second. And I keep looking for it. And, and also the supplemental, have we heard anything about the supplemental? Because that could be a lot of extra cash.
But that's already in our, uh, our current four B, isn't it, your estimate of the supplemental?
Supplemental, what? You, you counted the supplemental and the miscellaneous that we don't know what it is yet?
The auditor provided an estimation, which is, I'm sure will be beneath the supplemental.
I was just making that assumption because the number was higher than the certified distribution.
Are there any other questions or comments? Did, did, do you need to say more?
Uh, just regarding the election fund budget, we chose, uh, the auditor shows a twenty percent operating balance, so we're really close to, um, where you wanted to be with that anyhow. So twenty percent of the twenty twenty-four budget, which is election year.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Iverson.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. You know, even for the most astute of minds, this is a very confusing conversation. Um, and I was wondering, uh, has the council made, uh, it, uh, in the past, made this analysis uh, by FSG available to the public in any way? The multi-year projections?
It's, I don't think we've like put it out there on a website or anything. It's a, it's a document that the public can access if they request it, um.
It, it would be, it would take an extraordinarily large amount of explanation to make it in slightest way useful and not misinterpreted, but.
It's pretty.
Uh, I, I, I understand, I understand, uh, I, but.
Would you like to put it in on our website? Is that what you're asking?
No, no, I think, I think that probably Councilmember McKim is correct that it would provide, it would, it would need a lot of explanation. But I also think that this useful conversation that we're having here is fairly hard to follow without that document. So it's a little bit of a catch twenty-two
Mm-hmm.
where the public watching this does not have the benefit of seeing the multi-year projections or the list of assumptions that were encapsulated in an email. You know, it, it's, it's, I think it's, it'd be hard for those that are interested in following it.
Yeah.
Michelle and I had, um, requested, we didn't anticipate, um, FSG would be able to provide the full report. So, um, I, with your permission, we might suggest in the future, just kind of a, a really simple summary page of their, of their findings, which would be, um, a little bit easier to understand in the future.
And, and for the public to have an on-ramp into these conversations where they don't spend twice a month in, engaged in all this, yeah, I, I think that'd be really helpful. And they've also heard, um, this council talk about the benefit of having multi-year projections into the future to better guide us. And I think that would be helpful to, to show that we are doing just that.
Um, our conversation that we had with FSG, I did tell them that we were looking into annually having, um, a projection report prior to our, uh, budget sessions in September. And he said, as long as he can get the June thirtieth numbers and, uh, the other reports, he can get us that information. So we look, we will be working with them so that we can get that to you guys timely, so.
Nice, good.
And, and does the, does the contract allow us to actually have Mr. Garitas here to have? I mean, because we found that to be helpful in the past to have a, a work session discussion. So along with the report, the ability to have kind of ask about.
Um, Mr. Cockrell is currently working on the contract, so I think that could be added if it's not there.
Okay, because he's definitely done it before and it's been very useful.
Yeah.
I, I agree.
It was great.
Yeah. I would certainly like to suggest if we do that, that that's just what we do for that work session. Because la- last time he was here, he sat there and I'm sure we were paying him by the hour and he sat there and said, they remember Councilmember Iverson, when you looked at me and said, why, oh, having him sit there.
We did have that conversation, yes.
So, uh, it, and then by the time he did speak, we were, you know, in the mode to go home. It was like, it was like at the end of.
So let the record show that Counselor Hawk is suggesting we meet weekly. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, sorry.
I would miss you if I didn't get to see.
I know, I know. Um, no, that's duly noted. I'm sure that that was an oversight on my part, um, if we made him wait that long. Any other comments on the twenty twenty-four? Let's keep moving. Yeah, we've got more to read.
I'll be quick. I was just going to say, I appreciate the report for the following information, uh, the effects of annexation that it contemplates.
Yeah.
Um, and I also want to say that for, uh, come January first, it is a new city administration and a new council, uh, that comes in, some returners. And I would encourage them to think long and hard as they make recommendations to the county about all manner of things, including what justice looks like. Um, also what implications the city policy has upon our ability to fund things. Because that, you cannot have one without the other. Uh, we're operating in a system here that is exceedingly dependent on each other. And attention to that detail of all manner of things, uh, is going to help us as we move forward for what I hope to be a much better era.
Well said, yes.
Yep.
And you're here. Since the commissioners did put in place, uh, what they needed to so that we can move forward with the community corrections budget. And that's not in here. Of course, it's too late to advertise it as part of this advertisement, but, um, had we not better be considering what we're going to move? Is any part of that sitting there in that general fund that we plan to pull out and put in this? Or did we just not budget four hundred and some thousand dollars that we have to? See, I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, but it just, I'm not following what we're doing with that four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We moved it, we moved it from, um, the special purpose lit to the corrections. So it's not really in play in the general.
We only did ha- the, the first half. We removed it, but we still have to add it once we're
Yeah.
ready to do a budget for, but clearly we're going to.
But we can't do that. Yeah, but we can't do that till we have everything in line. So I'm sorry.
But is there something setting in the general fund budget that we're going to take out?
I don't think so. We're we took it out of special purpose.
Man, I don't, I forget what we were going to move over there. I thought we were going to move part of that contract over, but if we move the contract over to ARPA.
We have already taken four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of the contract or fro- for the contract, not, not special purpose, um. That was that, it was either general or PS, but I honestly don't remember which one we did, but where, which fund that, uh, that line is in. But we have already taken that four hundred and twenty-five thousand out. We're not going to get any more gain on that unless we're able to then also remove some more and fund it with the O P O.
Right.
So we might get another two hundred, you know, depending on what.
But we haven't actually budgeted anything yet out of that, uh, community corrections.
Correct.
Correct.
So I'm just saying we have to remember to do that.
Yes.
Yes, we definitely do. And hopefully we'll, we'll be able to find as well.
Right, every bit. Mm-hmm. All right. If we have no more of the, of commenting on that budget, we have some more reading to do. Um, we are now going to do, uh, the first reading for the Monroe County twenty twenty-four salary ordinance for elected officials.
All right, and ordinance adopting Monroe County Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies for county elected officials, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty-two A, whereas the Indiana legislature adopted the Indiana code thirty-six dash two dash three, uh, and other parts, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas IC thirty-six dash two dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to, number one, fix the number of officers, deputies and other employees. Two, describe and classify positions and services. Three, adopt schedules of compensation. And four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensation. Whereas the Monroe County Council wishes to establish compensation schedules and pay policies. Now being ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana, that this ordinance affixes the number of compensation for elected officials of the county from the period of January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, whose salaries comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by IC thirty-six dash two dash five are hereby solidly fixed and the following maximum level of salary is shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. For elected officials, time worked on or after January first, twenty twenty-four and prior to midnight of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of this salary ordinance and Personnel Policy Handbook. Regardless when the payment is issued, elected officials shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in the elected official salary compensation grid. County auditors shall not issue pay warrants for pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts listed are an annual appropriation amount. Calcul- calculation of the bi-weekly rate may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year-end. Elected official base rate schedule, in order to establish a more equitable system in setting compensation for Monroe County officials not set by the state, the county council will be setting a base rate for elected officials with a schedule of amounts to be applied. The base rate schedule is outlined in section one, the elected official salary compensation grid. The chief public defender is excluded as the salary and compensation is the same as the salary and compensation of the elected prosecutor. The sheriff is excluded from the base rate schedule as his, her salaries paid pursuant to IC thirty-six dash two dash thirteen dash two point five or IC thirty-six dash two dash thirteen dash two point eight. Additional information regarding payment and certification, supplementals and or per diems are outlined in section two of the elected official salary compensation grid. Monroe County Council policy regarding salaries tied to state mandated salaries. The annual salaries for the Monroe County Sheriff is tied or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana for the Monroe Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July first. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by the county council which are tied or related to the Monroe County Sheriff is mandated by the state of Indiana shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The county council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries which are generally modified on January first. This is presented to the county council, Monroe County, Indiana, by induction in full for the first time this tenth day of October, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, that was lovely. Are there any questions or comments on the elected officials' salary ordinance? All right. Seeing none, we will proceed to the next reading, which is the, um, twenty twenty-three salary ordinance for Monroe County employees, which Counselor Iverson and Counselor Crossley will be reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an ordinance adopting Monroe County Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies for county employees, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty-two B. Whereas the Indiana legislature adopted Indiana code section thirty-six dash two dash three, such sequential, which established the Monroe County Councils, the governing fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas Indiana code section thirty-six dash two dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to, number one, fix the number of officers, deputies and other employees. Number two, describe and classify positions and services. And number three, adopt schedules of compensation. And number four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensations. Being ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana, that this ordinance affixes the number and compensation of employees of the county from the period of January one, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, including all officers, deputies, assistants and other employees who salaries com- comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana code section thirty-six dash two dash five, uh, 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 sequential. And this compensation is limited by the following lines and maximum levels of salary shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are conditioned upon the strict compliance with and the adherence to the benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Council, Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council, this language will encourage, will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government. Any Monroe County employee, including those employees under contractual agreement or whose salaries are determined by state prescribed order, rule, guideline or mandate, shall not receive compensation above the salary grid outlined within this ordinance. The county auditor shall not issue pay warrants for any pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. The compensation amounts are listed as approximate annual appropriation amounts. The calculation of the bi-weekly hourly compensation rates may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year-end. Compensation paid on or after January first, twenty twenty-four and prior to midnight, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of the salary ordinance and Personnel Policy Handbook regardless of when the work is performed. Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook, any item not covered in the salary ordinance shall be governed by the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Job description, classification definitions. Beginning calendar year twenty twenty-two, council approved using the updated classifications and levels from Monroe County Government job descriptions. Compensation levels have been updated using alphanumeric letters A through E, listing all classifications outlined in section A of the ordinance notes. Full-time date compensation step increase schedule. Employees will attain a new compensation step increase level on the first day of the pay period, which includes the anniversary of their most recent full-time hire date. The compensation step increase schedule is outlined in section B of the ordinance notes. Knowledge, skills and abilities, K S A compensation procedures. Employees who have gone through the review process and approved to receive a knowledge, skills and abilities K S A status may receive compensation either one, three or eight-year level based on the compensation grid applicable to the assigned job description, classification and level. An approved K S A status will remain with the original requesting department for the determined period of time. Departments that are requesting employees K S A status to be transferred in the applicable position becomes vacant within their department. An employee's K S A status does not automatically transfer within the employ- with the employee and subject to review. An employee's approved K S A status only adjusts the compensation base rate for that employee. And employee's approved K S A status is not included in the years of service pertaining to longevity, under vacation calculations. A listing of approved K S A hires with term dates is outlined in section D of the ordinance notes.
Will not be reading that past.
A longevity scale. Employees employed within Monroe County Government prior to November first, twenty twenty-three shall receive a longevity payment for continual and uninterrupted service. These payments will continue until either there is a break in the employee's service or the employees in, or the employee ends employment with the county. Any employee hired after November first, twenty twenty-three is ineligible to receive longevity payments. To determine longevity, the effective date for longevity is the employee's most recent full-time hire of the employment with the county. All records must be verified by the Employee Services Department. All records must be verified by the Employee Services Department that involves any type of uninterrupted service. Longevity pay for eligible employees is based on a schedule outlined in section D of the ordinance notes. Of complete and uninterrupted years of service. A break in service will result, will result in the loss of. Excuse me, loss of longevity pay if the rehire date is after November first, twenty twenty-three. To be eligible for longevity payout, an employee must still be employed on the day after his, her anniversary date. Elected officials do not receive county longevity pay. Employees who salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guidelines or mandate, do not received. Do not receive county longevity pay. Probation officers would be an exception to this rule and would receive longevity. Prior years of service credit, begin in January first, twenty seventeen, county council approved allowing complete years only of prior years of service. For each term of full-time Monroe County Government employment. Be applied when calculated the rehire of an employee's compensation step increase level. Months of service which are less than one full year shall not be counted nor combined in order to achieve a complete year of service. For example, an employee who worked for one year and three months shall be credited with one year of service. The council administrator and or personal administrator must verify all prior Monroe County Government service with employee personnel records. And or with a per report before being applied to returning employee salary. The council administrator and or personal administrator will notify the department head if the prior service credit total has been verified and granted. The council administrator will maintain a spreadsheet of employees with confirmed prior service credit for future use. Any additional information and or explanation of the Monroe County Government's salary schedule and compensation policies is included in the salary ordinance. For the purpose of clarification and transparency, see section ordinance notes. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender, Chief Public, Chief Deputy Public Defender. And Monroe Circuit Court Commissioner are all tied and or related to the salaries mandated by the state of Indiana. For the Monroe County Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July first. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by Monroe County Council. Which are tied and or related to the above mentioned salaries mandated by the state of Indiana. Shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county set salaries which are generally modified on January first. Additional detailed defensive, defense service standards, standard G, Supreme Court compensation information. Indiana Code Section thirty-three dash thirty-nine dash six dash five. And Indiana Code Section thirty-six dash two dash three dash seventeen are incorporated by reference.
Thank you. We did it. Are there any questions or comments on the salary ordinance? All right, if there are no further questions, oh, yes, what?
I want to share my screen with regards to what was just read.
Okay.
Um, we put this together, um. After you guys had made a decision regarding longevity.
Yes.
So, um, after looking at it and that kind of thing, um, our legal counsel decided we needed to. Um, clarify some more language with regards to that, so, um. And to clarify in the language is just me trying to think through every possible scenario that we're gonna get, which like. Oh, I offered the job, you know, on October twenty-third, but they couldn't start until November first and so.
Yes, indeed. So you were offering an edit to what was just read.
Correct.
Got it. So the edits are in blue?
Yes, the edits that she has added are in blue, um, and it just helps clarify. And it also, um, is this the section here that also mimics the language? In this first paragraph that's in our personnel, uh, in that first paragraph, um, she, um. Molly edited so that it mimics the exact language that's in our personnel policy handbook.
So the complete and uninterrupted years of service, that's why I add it complete there, because to mimic the language.
Trying to get it so you guys can see it, um, another section that we added. Is, uh, with regards to the correctional center employees, um. So I'll let you go ahead and explain that one.
So I went through and looked at the collective bargaining agreements and highway, um, gets longevity payments as if. Any other county employee, so there's going to be a section added in their contract or collective bargaining agreement that says. Their longevity will be paid out in accordance with the salary ordinance, so not after November first. And the deputies are the same way. The jail's longevity payments are included on their hourly rate, so they get forty-eight cents for the first twenty years of service. So we just added a statement, um, to the longevity payment that correctional centers or correctional center. Employees are covered by their collective bargaining agreement and not by the sat- um, salary ordinance.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
Um, so two things, should we not in the section on? Could you go up to the longevity section at the beginning? Yeah. Should we not say an employee has an official hire date and has begun work? On or after November first, twenty twenty-three, because there's sort of, we, we refer to prior to November first and then after November first.
What happens?
Yeah, we actually have a little gap on November first, and I think the intention was to be on or after.
Okay. Um, yeah, I can change it, just tell me.
In the, at the end of that paragraph is where you would change the wording. Yes.
Official hire date and has begun work on or after.
Here, okay.
Um, and then the other thing was i- in the section, uh, that you added on the corrections officer. Uh, oh wait, can you scroll down so I can see? Do we want to, do we want to add something to that sentence that just says something like? Because longevity is already included in their rate, I mean, I, I don't want to make it sound like we're just trying to screw the corrections officers. It's that, it's already included in their hourly rate, I mean. It's just explanation, it's just, what?
Yeah.
Well, hi- hi- no, just the opposite, highway does and merit deputies do because it's not included in their hourly rate. Contract, right? I mean, maybe it's good enough, I don't know, I just didn't want to make it sound like, you know, we're negatively singling it out.
I think what we could do is after, at the very end, after collective bargaining agreement, the last sentence. Add longevity for correctional center employees is provided for by the collective bargaining agreement.
If we're in the editing mode. Oh wait. Will not be given to the.
I almost think that that. Because that is a, yeah, every time they do an agreement, everything is back up to jump ball and whatever it is. I'm not saying anything, I almost say, think there you say, covered by the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Or, uh, as longevity is provided for by the consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Since that is all negotiable, not saying anything there, but. No, because this almost mandates.
Considered by the collective bargaining agreement.
Cause this kind of.
Provided for by.
County council automatically says this each time, it's always gonna be there.
Um, so the sentence right before that blue sentence, where it says probation officers would be an exception to this rule. And would receive longevity. I think it's fine now that I say it out loud.
Okay.
I was gonna say that this rule wasn't specific enough and, but I think and would receive it makes it just great. So will we read this part again, um, next time with the changes or how do you want to address that?
You're not on. Correct.
Nobody will.
Nobody.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes, correct. I di- I thought it was a little unclear. Could you scroll back up? Uh, or down, I guess it is. Yeah. No, yeah.
I, I think we probably should reread it next time, just because we're gonna put the updated version in.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion? Should I say? Council, I move we amend the draft, uh, twenty twenty-four salary ordinance to include the text. That's been provided to us, uh, by the council office that's on our screen right now.
Second.
Um, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Eyes have it, we will move forward with that. Any other discussion on the salary ordinance?
Sorry.
Everything okay?
We also, um, legal counsel would also recommend that this longevity information. Also be put into the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance. Be, just because we will still be hiring.
Just for clarity.
And just for clarity, so that when somebody, if somebody does get hired, they'll go, it wasn't in there. So, we also would like to put that in the twenty twenty-three.
Council, I move we amend the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance to add the updated longevity text.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, say nay.
Thank you.
Note that it was, it was unanimous.
Unanimous.
And, um, we want to show you, um. Uh, do you want to start with just aviation and I'll, do you?
I will start wherever you will tell me.
What word, so?
What are we doing?
What, what, I, I missed this.
I, I think this is looking at the salary ordinance grids. Ye- yes, this is the detailed information.
Uh huh.
That we put in.
We're trying to avoid.
Yes, that we put into the salary ordinance, all, so we've highlighted things that might change just for your, um, reference. So right now there is, um, the aviation department gets.
Hang on, I'm just gonna hide this, sorry. So it's, there we go.
Right now, the aviation department gets, um, a supplemental paid out for. ARF certification and EMR certification, um. And, uh, Jeff Cockrell mentioned to me that he's been working with Carlos as I think the fire district might be taking some of the ARF. Um, responsibilities over, and so that might change. And we're looking into whether that has to go to an hourly rate as did the supplemental pay for the, um, correctional officers. And the, and the road deputies, so that's just may change.
May tend to. Okay, um. We are still looking at, uh, getting some clarification with regards to the clerk.
I'm working on the election worker pay, um. It, it came up at the election board meeting and we started looking at it. The inspector, the judges, the sheriff, the clerks, all are s- receive a per diem, but that per diems, um, set by the commissioners. And there's actually a county code that provides a range and then within that range, the election board's supposed to pick. So I think that might change just to say paid in accordance with Monroe County Code. Whatever chapter it is, which is slipping my mind. And then we have to figure out what to do with the absentee boards and so we're just working on that issue.
We can't see, I can't see the bottom half of whatever you share because of the, yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But basically, you're just telling us you're still working on it.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in here that we're still working on, uh, for the deputy corners. Where there's conversation going on whether they should be contract employees or part-time employees, so once we figure that out. That could change in the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. And then everything else that are possibly going to change is related to the sheriff deputy and the correctional officers collective bargaining agreement. So previously, the shift pay, the EMT pay, the training officer, the cert and the investigators was all along. Some, it's going to that hourly rate, we're still talking about, um, the education incentive and the training bonuses within the contracts. And, um, they're adding a new specialty of a hearing officer, and then the numbers for each of those teams have changed.
Does that all of our changes? I think so, um.
What's a hearing officer?
And then it's the kind of the same thing for the merit deputies that those specialty pays are going to an hourly rate. And I just finished today a fiscal impact, an estimated fiscal impact based on my very limited mathematical abilities. Um, to send to you guys in regards to, um, at least the merit deputy contract.
Good times, what's a hell, a, a hearing officer?
Uh, the hearing officer in the jail contract, um, so. There is, what they're doing is they're forming a team of officers who handle internal, um, write-ups for inmates. Um, and how, what consequences or disciplinary actions are taken for those inmates. So there are some things that are in jail policy that do not constitute a crime, such as like if you were caught tattooing or something. So those hearing officers deal with the internal policy issues.
Okay. Um, thank you, Council Record.
I, I was just gonna quickly say, uh, you'd mentioned your work with the election board and I want to thank you, Ms. Turner King. For working with the election board in that, uh, very difficult process. And I want to encourage all of us from council office, commissioner's office, clerk's office, election board. And legal to continue to work in that effort. Gosh knows, right, election law in Indiana. Is about as clear as mud on a, a day where you dropped your glasses and we want to be right by that. Cause if we're not right by that, someone will say we're operating outside of Title III and that's got some felony consequences. And in a recount or a contest, that becomes an issue, so. Nobody's trying to do anything but get this right, so let's continue in that effort and I, I appreciate that, we just gotta keep moving forward.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for sharing that, I didn't realize you were going to and, um, I'm glad you did.
Well, these are just things that after we had submitted, you know, into the packet, it was like. You know, we probably should like update this and that way you kind of have an idea of what we're still working on, so. I will, I'm a, I'm almost positive, like we always do, we'll have a. I will, I'm a, I'm almost positive, like we always do, we'll have amendments to the ordinance. So try to get it, you know, as current as possible, but you know, we're always making amendments. But at least, you know, for the adoption, we'll be pretty close.
Great. Um, if there are no further questions, we will move to item nineteen from the council office. And this is our second look at the twenty twenty-four council meeting schedule. And, um, some adjustments have been made based on feedback we gave last time, including the meetings have been moved to five P M instead of five thirty. The September work session from twenty-fourth to the seventeenth. And, um, some dates held for a potential sixth budget session. Could you remind me, Ms. Shaw, why the September work session was moved from the twenty-fourth to the seventeenth?
Auditor Smith suggested that we move the work session to the seventeenth in order, um, for the council to be able to attend the AIC conference, which is always held the last week of September. So, um, I did this adjustment based on that recommendation. Um, and also this year, we moved into having six days for budgets, uh, sessions. And so if you want to have a tenant, you know, go ahead and schedule a date, and if we use it, that's fine. And if we don't, we can cancel that budget session. But I thought if you wanted to go ahead and, um, choose one, um, either the eighteenth or the nineteenth, then we could go ahead and have that on there. And then if we don't need it, we can just cancel it, so. But my, I would like to be able to get this fin- not finalized tonight, but your recommendations tonight, so that we can finalize it at the work session. Uh, just so we can get out to the departments and they can start planning their meetings for twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Um, does anybody mind if we just say nineteenth is a placeholder for a sixth possible budget session if we needed it?
Great.
Yes.
All right, all in favor of just choosing the nineteenth, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Everybody said aye. All right, there we go. You have your eighteenth, you said September free, use that time wisely.
Okay.
Mr. Iverson.
I.
Situation.
I, the pack schedule on this calendar looks fantastic. I'm very doubtful that we're gonna get away with having any month without having a pack meeting. So I, I like that you indicated that in May, there won't be a pack due to the election, and we can pick an alternate date if we need to. But I, I think this year has shown that we need a pack meeting every single month.
Yes, and I, I think, um, when we get to that, whoever the pack committee is, we can make the, that determination, because we will also have November as well.
Agreed.
And so we can decide then.
Yep.
So that's why I kind of left them open.
Um, the only other thing that I would throw out there for consideration, and it does not impact days and times, so this is good to go. But I would like us to consider whether or not we would want to just have, um, council meetings and not differentiate specifically between regular and work sessions. Have perhaps within the agenda an agreement that will take care of what has been considered regular session business for the first half, short recess, work session. Um, it seems to me that that would help with the workflow um, and be more reflective frankly of how I've been doing it, because we've had so many times where regular session business just can't wait a whole month. Um, so that's what I would just propose for consideration.
And, and I would add, when we do put off the regular session for that month, that next meeting is so jam-packed that it's, it's a slog to get through because there's so much business.
I do want to say that when, um, in the month of September, I purposely did not schedule budget sessions on the tenth or the seventeen.
No, that's a good idea.
That way we will avoid that over, you know, trying to do a budget session as well as regular business, so.
The dreaded September backup.
Correct.
So if we don't distinguish between, uh, regular and work sessions, are we always going to be, um, meeting from up here at the dais, or are we?
We're gonna send a circle on the floor?
So what if you met like this, but we pulled a table up?
So it wasn't like, we didn't.
Kind of like budget sessions.
Did more budget session, so at least we're all sitting.
Okay.
It was a compromise. And then I've heard that there might be new furniture in here at some point, and we'd have to reconsider regardless.
Okay.
Okay.
And I know I had another question, but I can't. It's late.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is late.
A lot of good work got done at this regular.
Well, there's time, there's still time to talk, so, um, move forward with it as it is, um. I don't even know if they're in the meeting anymore, so we'll, we'll, we'll finalize it another time.
Okay, so do you want me to prepare it as just meeting, meetings?
Yeah, go for that and see if they notice.
Okay.
Can you really cheat?
I mean.
Okay.
It seems, it seems to be like, oh, taking advantage of what's actually happening, though, like that.
Yeah.
Yes. You can't see a difference between the two.
Right.
Right.
All right. And, um, are there any council comments?
Yeah, just one very, very full, just and, and councillor, President Wiltz already knows this and the council office does, but and I know this is absolutely the worst thing for a county council, but I am not going to be able to make, uh, the final vote on the budget next week. I have a work trip that I absolutely cannot get out of. Um, and so I won't be there, and I apologize.
You will be missed.
You've put in plenty of work on this budget.
Said everything you wanted to say tonight, did.
If not, I'll, I'll, I'm sure councillor Hawk, I will have a few more words of the, uh, the analysis.
Can, can you zoom in?
He can zoom in and do discuss if he can't vote.
Or he, or.
I will do my best, I, my schedule is not my own when I'm on these work trips, but.
Yeah. Any other council comment? Okay, then we will, um, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.